I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, September, getting ahead of myself, August 22, 2022. Mr. Trudgen, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Strawn.
Present.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Present.
Councilmember Rannan.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Mark Goggins, who's on my right at the end, and our city manager, Pat Trudgen, who is on my left at the end. We also have a number of staff, department heads, and others who will be participating in the meeting and will be introduced as various agenda items come up. I do want to remind folks, if you do have a cell phone, to either turn it off or otherwise make sure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. And we do have, I believe, a few people participating remotely via the Zoom interface this evening. We just want to remind folks who are participating remotely that as we come to opportunities for public input, that if you're interested in making a comment or asking a question during the public comment portions of the meeting, and you're participating via Zoom, that you let us know using the raise your hand feature during the public comment time, and we'll make sure and bring you into the meeting for your comment or question at that time. So that's for the folks participating remotely, as to how you can be brought into the meeting to make a comment or ask a question during public comment. With that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its name. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have consideration of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes from a staff perspective that need to be noted on the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do need to modify Agenda Item 10B. That's on the consent agenda. We previously just had one temporary gambling license for you to consider. Today, we did receive an additional request for a temporary liquor license for bent distillery. We have reviewed that information, and it is ready for potential approval tonight. So I'd like to amend the agenda to add the temporary liquor license to Item 10B.
And we received that as a bench handout, and it's available for the public in the back of the room.
Correct.
All right. Are there any council-initiated changes to the agenda this evening, or items councilmembers might like considered separately from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. We also do want to check in. We mentioned items in our consent agenda just a moment ago with the city manager. That's Section 10 on the second page of our agenda, called "Approve the Consent Agenda." It's got five items, letter to A through E. Those items are typically taken up as a single motion with limited opportunity for public comment and discussion, but we do want to provide an opportunity for members of the public who may be here to either ask a question or make a comment about one of those items to let us know at the start of the meeting, and we can actually consider that item earlier in the meeting, and so that you don't have to wait to the very end to make your comment or ask your question. So we'll just check with folks, both watching from home remotely as well as here in the chambers, if you're here specifically for an item in Section 10 of our agenda called Consent Agenda. We want to make sure we know that now, and we can consider that item earlier. Is there anyone here for an item in Section 10 of tonight's agenda? And if we have anybody participating remotely that wants to comment on an item in Section 10, if they can use the raise your hand feature to let us know.
We do not have anybody raising their hand.
All right. Just give folks a few more minutes, just in case it takes a moment to respond in the remote interface. Still no hands raised?
No hands.
All right. Doesn't appear that we have anybody here for an item in Section 10. So with the noted change to Item 10B, the addition of the other license to consider at the same time, we would, I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We have our agenda this evening. Next is public comment. This is an opportunity for general public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items on the agenda as those items come up, but we do want to provide at the beginning of each meeting an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on the agenda but may be related to city business or are of interest to members of the public in the city. Just a couple of rules of the road for public comment, which apply both to this time of the meeting as well as later in the meeting, and I'll try to go through them again as we get to another opportunity for public comment. But generally speaking, by council rule, each speaker is allocated three minutes for their comments. We ask that each speaker direct their comments to the city council, and if there are questions, either if we can address them at the time, we can answer those questions at the conclusion of public comments, or perhaps, which is more likely, we would address those questions to staff for follow-up subsequent to the meeting. That's usually the case with a lot of things where questions come up at this time, just because they're not on our agenda and we're not necessarily prepared for them. Once again, the three-minute time limit. Address, council, with the comments or questions. At the beginning of your remarks, if you can state your name, and either your address or street, or city, if you're not a Roseville resident, for the record. We also do have a clipboard up on my left side of the table over at the end there, that once you complete your comments, if your name is a name that might not be easy for folks to spell automatically for the record, you can write your name on the clipboard, and that'll just provide us the opportunity to make sure we get the name spelled correctly in the official record and the meeting minutes of this meeting. But we don't want that to disrupt your comments, and so we do ask that you sort of make your comments and then step to the side to do the name part of it, because that hopefully will allow the next person to come up and speak. I will say also, if there are a number of people who do wish to speak during public comment, we do have the two microphones, and there's nothing wrong with coming up and having a seat at the other microphone when somebody is using one of them. And if you want to sort of queue up, we do have some empty seats in the front row, too, if you're coming from further back in the chambers and want to be ready to take one of the seats when it's available. I think the only other thing I'll add, and I'll probably be adding this council meetings into November, is that generally speaking, public comment, either during an agenda item or at the beginning of the meeting, is not an opportunity to speak in support of or opposition to political candidates, whether they be city or other candidates, or issues on the ballot. That is not something that's generally considered part of city business or related to or of interest to folks in the city. For the purposes of our meetings, obviously, folks in the city have a great deal of interest in the upcoming elections, but for the purposes of our meetings, that's not a part of public comment that would be appropriate. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for, once again, this is general public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We would just ask that you come up once again to the microphone, state your name for the record, and there's that three-minute timeline. And once again, feel free to use both microphones and be prepared to speak after somebody finishes their comments. Hello.
Good evening. My name's Margot Hermes, and I live on Old Highway 8. I'm here in reference to the proposed plat changes.
Uh-huh. I'm going to stop you right there. That is on tonight's agenda.
Oh, it is? I didn't see it.
We'll provide an opportunity for public comment. It is actually Item 7A, just at the middle of Page 1 of the agenda.
Okay.
Item 7A. So I hate to make you have to come up again, but this will give you time to prepare yourself for your comments later.
Okay. All righty. Thanks.
And for anybody else who was prepared to come up and make comments on that item this evening, that woman provided you a little bit of an update on when that might happen or how it might happen. So thanks for helping with that. Hello and welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. Thank you. My name is Afreida Daniels Dresseme. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Like I stated earlier...
I do just, I won't take this time away from you, but I do want to say our rules for signs, I forgot to mention it. We can't have signs that create a problem for people behind you to see. So that's the only rule we have with signs, is that it can be visible, just not blocking other people's view. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, like I said, my name is Afreida Daniels. I am a community and political organizer with the MRLF, AFL-CIO, and an activist in the Liberian community in Minnesota. On a normal day, I will be here talking to you about prevailing wages on a construction project, or advocating for equitable housing, access to housing, and other equitable issues. Never did I think that I'll be here today asking you distinguished members of Roseville City Council members to ask your police department to investigate the death of my friend and confidant, Minister Moses Sware. Permit me to tell you a little bit about Moses. Moses was a 33-year-old father of two beautiful girls whom he adored more than anything. Moses was the most calm and gentle soul I have ever come across. For the last three years, Moses called Roseville his home. Unfortunately, unfortunately, on the 11th of July, we got a call that my best friend had an accident and was on life support here in Roseville. I'm sorry. This is very emotional for me. Moses was the son and breadwinner of his mother and siblings who were currently residing in Liberia. He was here living the American dream as an immigrant. Moses touched many lives, including mine, during his time here with us. He was the minister of the gospel and a renowned gospel singer in the Liberian community. To me, Moses was my best friend. The person, I was the person he confided in about his wins and struggles. Moses was one of those people who was struggling with a relationship where he was an abused victim, but couldn't speak up because he was a man. On the 10th of July, I went to hear my friend speak during one of his concerts. After the concert, on my way home, we spoke. We talked about our plans for the weekend to take our girls to the park. We talked about our plans to go to Jamaica to shoot his music video. Monday, he called me and told me that he was ready to walk out of an abusive relationship. Calm like any other day, he sounded happy that finally he had got the strength to move on. We text back and forth until 5:49 PM on that Monday. So you can imagine, when I got the call at 7:00 PM, that my son, my husband, my friend had just gotten into an accident that left him on life support. I was told that he drowned, and then later, I was told that he attempted to commit suicide. Later, I was told that he was so selfish that he decided to kill himself over an abusive relationship, leaving behind his two beautiful girls, a community that depended on him and his family. Till today, I've heard 10 different stories about what happened to my friend. Few days ago, we went to your police department asking them to investigate. After hiring a private investigator, we found out a lot of the stories coming out of this case was very contradictory. During that day, I have never felt so insulted. The police department had dismissed us, the family, including myself and members of the community. We decided to bring this case here to you all. Moses was a member of your community, and he deserved to be heard even from the grave. His daughters deserve to know what happened to him. His community deserves to know what happened to him. If truly my friend was selfish enough to leave us taking away his life, I want to be able to look at his daughters and tell them that. But if something else happened to Moses, I'm asking you today, please, hold your police department accountable to investigate thoroughly, so that his mother and his children and our community at large can have some level of closure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment at this time? And if we're onto a different subject, I do just want to make a note that the police department, as I understand it, is awaiting the report from the medical examiner, and that is still pending. And sometimes it does unfortunately take some time to get those from Ramsey County Medical Examiner. Once that report is available, more information can be provided as to the details of what the findings of the medical examiner are, and certainly any follow-up can be done by the investigators at that time. And so certainly, that is the path forward, and we all, I think, await what those results are, and want to be with you in terms of knowing what those are. So thank you for being here this evening in support of Moses. Right? Hello and welcome.
Thank you. It's hard to follow that, but I will try. My name is Diane Sell, and I'm the director of, what am I, the director of Community Engagement and Care at Roseville-Lutheran. That is where I work. Where do I live? Thanks for asking. I live in White Bear Township, but I grew up in Roseville. I am here today because our church, I know I have three minutes, so hang on. Roseville Lutheran this fall is to host the first annual Festival for Change. Festival for Change is a collaborative event between RLC, Roseville Lutheran Church, and the local BIPOC community leaders, with the goal of bridging the gaps between faith communities in Roseville and the BIPOC residents of Roseville. This two-day event will feature live music, spoken word, murals, sorry, art demonstrations, and food trucks from local vendors. There are 33 churches in Roseville, and we really don't talk to each other. We all do our local efforts, our local outreach and broader, but rarely do we speak to each other. This woman sitting next to me knows more about what's going on at St. Rosa Lima than I do, and I work at Roseville Lutheran. So that's one of the goals, to bring us together, to collaborate, to let organic things happen, and to help bridge the gap between the BIPOC residents of Roseville. And I'm, yeah. I'm going to turn it over to Kathy right now, because something really organic happened in our steering committee, and she's going to share a little bit about that.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ramon from Do Good Roseville, and I'm super excited about this, for the reasons that Diane outlined. But what came out from it was, among doing this and supporting the BIPOC community, was hiring food trucks, hiring entertainment, BIPOC food and entertainment. But then we were like, what else can we do? And we considered whether or not we could give money back to a specific organization, but we decided that what would make more sense, would be better and more impactful, was to create what we're calling uplift student grants. So we are, between money donated from the churches and money that Do Good Roseville is raising, we are going to have uplift grants, where we're going to give small amounts of money to students that can be nominated for, can be any student in the Roseville schools, or a student living in Roseville, who can, with just a small amount of money, could make a difference in the trajectory of their life. So I'm super excited about that and about the possibilities with that, and what we're going to learn from those nomination forms. So that will be formally announced, so this is not formal yet. That will be formally announced at the festival, but it's something that I'm super excited about, that we can do in working together.
And these are BIPOC students, by the way.
Right.
That is it. Thank you so much for your time. You're not as scary as I thought you'd be.
Generally, we're not. Is there anyone else here this evening for general public comment at this time? Thank you, everyone, for being here and participating. Oh, I'm sorry. I hadn't seen you come down.
Hi, everyone. I'm Telma Saye, and on behalf of the team, Justice for Moses, I would also like to eye that I am one of the Liberian Gospel artists as well. I had a rough path with Moses. I also suffered in the hands of his, quote-unquote, manager, his girlfriend. And my pictures were taken and put on porn website, saying that I was offering free sex. And I'm a married woman, and people were calling me because of this young lady who Moses suffered abuse in her hands also. I am appealing to you all. Our hearts are on fire. We cannot say, you know, what exactly happened to Moses. We are not shifting blame, but the Moses we know were not in his own life. Therefore, we demand, or we are appealing for proper investigation. We met with the police department here, and we also met with the coroner office, and they told us that there was nothing to investigate, that Moses' girlfriend had already stated that she was leaving the relationship, and Moses felt jealous and took his own life. And knowing the Moses that we know, that would not be true. They showed us a video that we watched, Moses' family and the rest of the team showing an individual jumping into the pool, and it never came back up. And they said that, the doctor that was there said that Moses pushed himself down into the pool. And I personally asked him, would anybody kill themselves in the pool? We all know that if you are in water and you are suffocating, the first instant of life kicks in, and you will fight for life. This individual never came back up. Or whatever we saw from the police dash cam, not from Moses' phone, never came back up to even fight for life. And there are so many ways that people can kill themselves, and water is not one. I was hoping that they were going to say the death was accidental, but because they demanded and stuck on their words that it was a suicide, and it involved being investigated, that was a punch in the face and an insult. That broke me to pieces, and I have had restless nights, endless sleep because of this father, who I want to walk out of this relationship. And I knew that sooner or later, something might have happened. So we are begging you and appealing to you to please, please, please. As a mother, Moses left two kids. That's his kids, Mom. Her heart is burning. She always bugging my phone. And her greatest prayer today to me was, Telma, please tell Moses to get up. Tell Moses to get up and let this bad dream go away. And I said, I can't, I can't. The only thing we can do is come here and beg for proper investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here for public comment this evening? All right. Once again, thank you to everyone who's been here and spoken this evening during public comment. That brings us then to the remaining items on our agenda. Next on our agenda is consideration of recognitions and donations. We have one item this evening, which is to consider a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. It would be appropriate to read the proclamation and then a motion to either approve it, well, to approve it would be in order. We do have a version of the proclamation also in Spanish available in the meeting materials, as well as will be published with the English version on the city's bulletin board outside of the council chambers here. With that, the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the city of Roseville recognizes and honors contributions of all members of our community, and whereas September 15th is the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, and Mexico achieved independence on September 16th, and Chile achieved independence on September 18th. And whereas in 1988, the United States Congress adopted a resolution designating September 15th through October 15th each year as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas Hispanic Americans bring a rich cultural heritage representing many countries, ethnicities, and religious traditions which contribute to America's culture and America's future. And whereas the Hispanic community has had a profound influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and services, and they have enhanced and shaped our national heritage with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the United States celebrates the culture and traditions of Spanish-speaking residents who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the city of Roseville invites all members of the community to celebrate the 2022 Hispanic Heritage Month with the theme Unidos, Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th of 2022 to be Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Roseville. So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Breton, seconded by Councilmember Wilmes to approve that proclamation. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously, and that proclamation is approved. That then brings us to our business items this evening. We have three items under general business. So the first is Item 7A, which is to consider preliminary approval of a major plat to subdivide two residential parcels into six lots for two family attached homes, and one lot for retention of an existing single-family home, as well as an outlot. We have, from our staff, Brian Lloyd here, our senior planner, who is just going to give us a brief description of this item. We are coming back to this after having tabled it by the council, after having our previous meeting and discussion of it. And so we're just going to get a quick update from Mr. Lloyd, just to kind of get us all up to speed, and folks at home who may not have been participating in that earlier meeting. And then we'll probably see how the council is, or if we have questions and that sort of thing, and then move forward on this item. Mr. Lloyd, a brief summary.
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a request for consideration of a preliminary plat at 2986 and 2994 Old Highway 8. The parcel is outlined in red on the map there. The proposal is illustrated here in the preliminary plat drawing. Generally shows one lot for the detached home at 2994 Old Highway 8, and the remainder of the property subdivided into six lots for three twin home dwellings there. The planning commission reviewed this at its July meeting and recommended approval with a four-to-one vote, with certain conditions related to park dedication, stormwater management, and standard items like that. As you mentioned, the city council began its consideration on July 25th and has tabled it until today. Staff continues to recommend approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report, and has provided a resolution to that effect for consideration this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. And so then we'll go to, are there any council questions for staff at this time, based on the information provided through the open house, the planning commission hearing, the July 15th council meeting, or subsequent or intervening communications? I saw, Councilmember Wilmes, you have a question for staff?
Yes, thank you. Brian, where are we on our 120-day clock, if you will?
The statutory timeline by the RSCA here would expire, sorry, October 8. I get confused about date numbers when it gets into Latin abbreviations at the front.
Okay. And then if the council determined they would like to extend this for another 120 days, the city would have to give the proposer notice before that October 8. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Other questions for staff at this time? All right. Question for the council. We took this up at our July 15th meeting, and we had public comment at that time, and we're into the council consideration when it was tabled. There certainly isn't a requirement that we open up for public comment again, although I know we have folks that are interested. So I did want to just check in with the council at the beginning of the process here, just to make sure if there is any concern about reopening for public comment, that we know that at this time and act accordingly. But so this is just a check-in with the council. Any objection to proceeding with public comment?
No.
All right. Then, once again, the rules of the road for public comment, I'll summarize from my previous discussion. It's a three-minute time limit by council rule per speaker. We ask once again that you address comments to the city council or questions, and then we can provide answers to any questions, to the extent that they may be technical or that there are readily apparent answers. At the end of the comments, of all the people who wish to comment or ask questions, if the questions are more of a philosophical nature, or what do councilmembers think one way or another, that will probably be answered during our council discussion and action. But if there are technical questions or questions about process, et cetera, we can attempt to answer those once everybody has completed their comments or questions. Once again, if you can begin your comments with your name and your address or street, if you're a Roseville resident, or city if you're not, and just an admonishment about no political commentary or advocating for particular candidates or issues is appropriate during council meeting comments. With that, I see we have our first commenter up here patiently waiting for me to finish.
Sure.
Welcome. And once again, if you can state your name.
Smargo Hermes. I live on Old Highway 8. I have, we bought our home in 1979. We've been there a long time. It's a neighborhood. We're all neighbors. Everybody gets along. We have no, no problems. And we just recently had, well, recently, four years ago, I think it started, the sand companies project, the Edison project up the road. So we have lots of, lots of multifamily housing. We don't need anymore. You know, we just want to keep our neighborhood a neighborhood. We're all friends. I know we're over there in that forgotten little Roseville triangle, but we really would love to have the same considerations by all members of the city council as the rest of Roseville gets. I mean, yeah, that's, I guess that's mainly what I wanted to say, and I'm going to ask you not to pass that amendment for the plat change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello and welcome.
Hello. I'm Lori Star-Pastwa. I'm here with my husband, Roger. We live on Troseth Road. And the first thing I want to do is thank you for all the work that you do give to Roseville and the time you've given us by calling us, by emailing, by meeting with us. We're also grateful to live in a country where we have the right to express our opinion. It's really... It's really difficult to tell from the plat map what's going on. It's small. Even with a magnifying glass, it's really hard to read. But because of the density proposed in this plat of turning two-family homes into seven-family homes, the lot is going to be covered with impervious surfaces, buildings, sidewalks, parking spaces, and a twenty-six-foot road down the middle of it. From what I can tell, the buildings don't even meet the required setbacks at the back of the property. The, the appearance of that much impervious surface is not in character with this block of Roseville. It's not even in character with other twin homes that are just north of Sandcastle, where they have really large yards. Roseville City Council made a change in the zoning to meet their twenty-forty plan, and these were supposedly to address a need for more multi-unit housing and middle, missing middle housing. The average price of a home in Roseville in July of this year was three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, or, yeah, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. The cost of Mr. Brahma's units are going to be five-hundred-thousand dollars. That's not fitting into our neighborhood either. And that we can't believe that the intent of the law that was passed is to change a neighborhood this drastically. The houses on this block are the missing middle. And do you think that future residents of Roseville aren't going to want single-family homes? There's less than one percent of single-family homes for sale in Roseville. We know that you must make laws that affect all of Roseville. Doesn't mean you shouldn't be aware of laws that have been passed prior to your term. And I know that all the neighbors have provided you lots of information now for you to look at, tons of information, much more than you've probably had time to put into it. And I hope that you look at that information carefully. And I don't think that the law can paint all the neighborhoods with the same broad stroke of the law, especially when that law lacks the input of the majority of Roseville residents. And I don't think that this zoning change is going to make any difference to the density in people or culture in the neighborhood. We ask that you put a stop to the plat project as planned, and that you certainly think about putting moratorium or more thought into future projects that affect the neighborhood so much. You've decided that Roseville's going to grow. Now you need to make the choice of involving the citizens to determine how we should grow and where we should grow. This part of the neighborhood is not where we should grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi.
There's kind of a light spot on the table you can see, hopefully, as to where the camera
is. Is this like right here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Can you zoom it in for me?
Now we get the battle between the people in the booth.
That's pretty good.
On the table.
Okay. My name is Doug Burkhart, Roseville city resident since nineteen eighty-seven. Purchased my home then, and I, Trosseth Road. So I just want to start off with this little map here. This here, this little corner up here is what they call the Roseville Triangle. And as, you can't read this, but less than twenty percent of Roseville land area, and I'm going to talk about this just real quickly, this is about twenty percent of land area of Roseville, yet we have forty percent of the commercial property. Add to that, less than five percent of the Roseville land area in the triangle, and we have fifteen percent of apartment units, and we have other multi, you know, units or multifamily dwellings, too. To me, it appears that we're somewhat redlining the western area of Roseville in that we have all this type of development, and I think somebody else said the same thing about, hey, let's, let's spread this out to the other parts of Roseville. We, we have our, we have our high density. Okay, we, we don't have that many single-family homes. So that's number one. Number two, I just want to quickly show, here's another map here. Where is it?
Take a moment. You may have to zoom out again.
Can you? Does it, oh, there we go. Okay, can you go, go farther in? That, perfect. Okay. Now, this, this happens to be the, the new plat here. This is my, this is my property right here. And again, I've lived there since nineteen eighty-seven. This whole area, it used to be just two lots, or it is still two lots. Every, if you look closely, and you can't see it because you can't see the red in this, but every one of these plats drains to this corner of my property, every one of them. Okay? This whole area is eight feet above my property, which is this part here. Then my backyard goes down even lower. This property right next to me is Brahma, Mr. Brahma's property, and since Mr. Brahma, the person that owned it before Mr. Brahma, he was there before me, he used to have to walk through my yard to dig a little trench for the, for the water to drain out in the wintertime. Okay? So he had water problems, we have water problems already. Okay? And now you're going to be building this, putting these drainage. Who's going to be, who's going to be responsible if this doesn't work right? I mean, engineers are great, but they're not perfect. Okay?
Right. About three minutes and ten seconds right now. Can you wrap up with, finish?
Yeah, just, yeah, I'll just have a couple parting comments here. I think, in my opinion, that we need a moratorium. I'd like to see a moratorium. I'd like to see transition zones put into the new zoning. I mean, if we do, if we do a moratorium, I'd like to see more analysis of transition zones between multifamily, commercial, you know, townhouses, townhouses, and single-family homes.
All right. And that's your final thought?
That's it.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Hi, Stephanie Turine, two-nine-three-three Trosseth Road. I just want to, I hope you guys haven't made your decision yet, because my husband and I moved in, ended two thousand and sixteen, and this little corner of Roseville is kind of like a little hidden gem. You're really close to the city, but you don't feel like you're in the city. And you just have this wooded area back there with bigger houses, bigger yards, and I really hope that this doesn't go through, because it's really going to impact what we have established there in that little, that little, our little Trosseth area. It's like a little triangle, and all the backyards back there are just, it's just yard. And with the proposal that's coming, it does feel like it's going to impact that, not necessarily in a positive way. And we all have had, as you explained, some drainage issues back there, too, which I don't know if those ever have been fully addressed either, and I know we've been working with the city on those. So I hope you haven't made your decision, and I do hope that we're able to keep that little, little slice of heaven back there in Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello and welcome.
My name's Mike Castle. I live at three thousand and two Trosseth. So I look at the block. I'm not actually living on the block. Recommendations to denial should be supported by specific findings of fact. Are failures to comply with the comp plan specific? Why does planning not provide for the orderly, economic, and safe development of land, but leave it to council to add conditions? Regarding the essential characteristics that my neighbor just spoke of, the Trosseth Farm Remnant has thirty-six homes on twenty acres. Most were built before nineteen fifty-nine, when this was still a village, not a city. Twenty-eight of the thirty-six homes are valued at less than three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. There are no sidewalks. Just a handful of driveways face all of the thirty-six homes. Whoever planted that out was trying to make an island, and it's worth preserving. Five units per acre has been the maximum density in LDR for, probably forever. That's three times the density of the homes on this block. Ignoring specific area context, in a one-size-fits-all zoning, it's myopic and it's wrong. Would Midland Hills, or South Owasso, or Glick Lane accept eight units per acre in their neighborhoods? Quote, "Housing options to serve the needs of all Roseville residents. A zoning overlay or neighborhood historic designation could serve my neighbors." Comp plan bullet points call for developing a coordinated housing strategy and programs and policies to encourage the redevelopment of housing stock. Infill focus here should look like ADUs, carriage homes, mother-in-law apartments, to accommodate multi-generational families or extended cohabiting immigrant families that might want to garden and supplement, you know, their food needs. Eight units per acre might make sense for a tiny home complex or cottages around a courtyard, small dwellings, not what this thing proposes. Right now, a nineteen fifty-one Rambler on County Road B is listed for two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. It's marketed for tear down and creation of two five-hundred-thousand-dollar twin homes. If you guys had a land trust or other programs to redevelop naturally occurring affordable housing, of which we have tons, this property wouldn't be lost to redevelopment at five-hundred K. That tear down operationalizes the risk that you've mentioned five times in the chapter four of the housing plan. Approving this replat with a private road as the first LDR infill project puts a welcome mat out to REITs, institutional investors who can look at a block, buy out the neighbors, tear it down, and create something you guys have specifically said you don't want. So I've got more to say, but I'll stop here and just say, a month ago, Dan, you mentioned that you could take the bigger look at the LDR zoning district standards and reconsider the decision that was made. This is the most prudent course. That would represent the kind of stewardship toward Roseville that we need right now. Please pass a motion to recommend denial of this subdivision with a private road in a block that's got nothing even close to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have people participating remotely? Why don't we bring one of those folks in for their comments, and then we can recognize another person here from the council chambers?
All right. I'll bring Judy Colby in.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, Judy Colby, thirty-fifteen Trosseth Road. I am a second generation, also in this same area. I believe that if Mr. Brahma is allowed to split the plats into four versus evening out the two plats and leaving the depth as is, the city of Roseville and others will be very surprised with where his plans will go from there. The proposed concept we, we were given implies that Mr. Brahma, the developer, has made all the decisions of what he wants to do, but the first step will be plat change, and from there he will decide what will really happen. This is from his mouth to my ears. So what guarantees do you or we have that the proposed development is factual? Will he sell the lots as is, but another developer comes in and doesn't follow through with the proposed water solutions? Excuse me. Located in the Roseville city, or excuse me, Roseville zoning code ordinance, I've put some things down. I may not be exactly correct, but I believe they fit. Section one-zero-zero-one-point-five, use is not provided for within zoning districts. Whenever a use is not specifically permitted in any zoning district and is determined by the community development department, do not be consistent with the permitted and/or conditional use chart, the use shall be considered prohibited. Nothing in the LDR description specifically permits partial segregation, a private street creating a new subdivision, and the employment of more than one twin home or duplex. In section one-zero-four-point-five, one and two-family design standards, one and two-family design standards, the standards in this section are applicable to all in one and two-family buildings. The intent of these standards is to create streets that are pleasant and inviting, and to promote building faces which emphasize the living area as the primary function of the building or the function of the residential use. One thousand and four-point-five versus one thousand and four-point-six, building arrangement, nothing in the language of this constitute accommodate structures that are not facing the street. The RSCA proposal summary refers to driveway, not a private street. As such, don't these planned, planned twin homes need to face Old Highway Eight and observe the thirty-foot setbacks? Section one-zero-four-point-six, multifamily design standards. Orientation of buildings to the street. Buildings shall be orientated so that a primary entrance faces one of the abutted streets. In the case of the corner lots, a primary entrance shall face the street from which the building is addressed. Primary entrances shall be defined by scale and design, street-facing facet design. No blank walls are permitted to face a public street, walkways, or open public space. Ramsey County requirements. New driveways on Ramsey County roads require turnaround. Replacing an existing driveway in a county road does not require a turnaround to be added. Mr. Brahma is not replacing a driveway, he is making a new one. Cul-de-sacs. If there is not a looped road system provided and proposed right-of-way is greater than two-hundred feet in length, an approved turnaround shall be constructed. The RPCA attachments indicates the length of the proposed driveway is well over the two-hundred feet. Will delivery vehicles, garbage trucks, postal service turn into or access a private driveway? Not to my knowledge. This is what our city of Roseville will be seeing on Old Highway Eight. A lineup of seven mailboxes, minimum, of fourteen trash bins and recycle bins weekly lining Old Highway Eight, not including if they do yard waste bins.
Ms. Colby, you're at three forty-five right now. Thank you.
All right. I'm good. Thank you very much for listening, and all I say is please deny the replat proposal. We, as residents of the city of Roseville, appreciate your time and consideration of our opinions and strong amount of evidence we put before you to deny this plat change. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
I'm on.
You're on.
Roger Pastwell, I go by Lori's husband, so. So thanks again for coming out on that Sunday, Mayor, and I still think that was a big deal. But I've been a Roseville resident since nineteen fifty-four, and chances are I was in Roseville while you guys were still in diapers someplace. I've watched Roseville change, and not, in a lot of respects, not for the better. I mean, I grew up in this neighborhood, and a lot of guys worked long hours and sometimes two or three jobs so they could get out of Minneapolis proper and St. Paul proper with the postage stamps lots to buy into a lot on the Trosseth Farm. And since then, there's been eighteen splits in there. And since eighteen splits have happened, we started getting the flooding problem, otherwise, but that's neither here nor there. I just, I'd like to see a legacy neighborhood stay. I mean, there isn't many left, especially around Roseville, not that I've seen. So I, I ask you to, to vote this one down and, and let it stand for a while yet anyway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Do we have another online participant? All right. Brendan Coell in. Do we have him in? I guess he's in.
Brendan, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Brendan.
All right. Well, I'll start with, good afternoon, city of Roseville Council and all the residents of Roseville and Highway Eight. I am Brendan Coell, a resident of twenty-nine-sixty Old Highway Eight, Roseville, Minnesota. And I, I can easily keep this in three minutes. I think everyone on the council saw the pictures I sent you this morning of my yard itself with the solution. with the solution provided for drainage in the Trosseth Old Highway 8 area. And again, I lived at this house, at the home at 2968, 2960, my entire life, 53 years. I purchased the home from my parents. Again, spent my childhood playing in the backyard between Trosseth and Old Highway. There's a reason I purchased my parents' home. It's the integrity of the neighborhood, the ability to play in the backyard. And if you don't have, if you don't have, I can share my screen if needed. I'll share my screen, show you.
We did receive the information you had sent us.
Yeah. I mean, if you see my backyard, which I'm sharing with you guys, I mean, this is the solution that was provided to me, which it, you know, to me, it's just a Band-Aid solution for, you know, okay, I'm still responsible for the management, the XL energy cost associated with it. You know, the drainage pump is on my side, but it's less than 300 feet from this proposed plat change. And I don't understand how I'm going to pick up the cost when there is overflow. That pump's going to continue to run itself too. So I guess tonight, I'm just asking you, you know, take a look at what really is the drainage issue itself. I mean, I don't, nobody wants a muddy backyard. I mean, look at your backyard. It's not anything like mine. With that, I guess, that's all I have. What else can you say?
All right. Thank you for your comments. Hello and welcome.
My name is Mike Aman, and I am a 37-year resident of Roseville. I bought my home at 2926 Old Highway 8 in 1985. So I've seen a few changes over the years, some for the good and some not so good. This replat has no real value or advantage or benefit for the people of our neighborhood. Who benefits is the developer. The project on a corner of Old 8 and D is not complete yet or fully occupied, so our neighborhood has not yet felt the full impact of that development, let alone the impact of the new proposed development. So I ask from my heart to please deny the replat proposal and represent the will of the people in attendance here and on the Zoom calls tonight instead of representing the will of the developer. And our neighborhood is pretty special. I've been here for a long time. I've been retired for 10 years now, and we have all kinds of wildlife in the backyards. There's deer and fox and coyotes and turkeys and raccoons. And I think as all this development kind of encroaches on our space, a lot of that stuff might disappear. And just kind of a story I'd like to tell you folks is something that actually happened to me in my backyard. I enjoy the wildlife quite a bit, and this happened a few years back. And there was a flock of about 15 or 20 turkeys right outside my back door. And they have a tendency to kind of poop all over the place, you know, and make a mess and this and that. It was in the wintertime, and my back sidewalk was iced up. And I figured if I go bolting out my back door, I might startle them and scatter and outrun. So I went bolting out my back door. I slipped and fell on the ice. The turkeys moved about 10 feet into a semicircle and all turned around and looked at me like, who's the turkey now? It's just kind of moments like that with, I've seen deer, you know. It's just a very special and very beautiful place that I call home, and I would like to have it if it could be preserved that way. So I ask you from my heart just to deny the replat of that area. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have additional public comment at this time? Oh, another one on? Oh, four more waiting on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'll bring in Janade Khan in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Hello and welcome.
Okay, hi. My name is Janade Khan. I'm a resident at 2972 Old Highway 8, and we also own the property next door, 2968 Old Highway 8. The 2972 was purchased from the owner next door years ago, back in the early 90s, by my mom. It was developed by her, and my father lived here ever since 1992. I just purchased the property from him. My wife and I and our two young children purchased the property in April, have since done a full renovation on the house and everything. And I just am giving my background so that you guys know, you know, my family has also grown up in here since the early 90s. And my personal background is property development, actually. We, my wife and I have flipped houses for the last handful of years and done so successfully. So I understand the need for housing, and I understand the city council's view that they're looking to create affordable housing for those around. But, you know, I don't know the full details of it, of the plat change, but I do know that $500,000 is not affordable. So there's nothing affordable about that. There's just more density, I guess, is what people are looking for. But I think a more reasonable approach would be turning two single-family homes into, say, four single-family homes. That would be more reasonable, I can understand from a profits perspective and the city council wanting to, you know, that's doubling the density of those two properties. But to go from two single-family homes to now seven potential properties with the ability to potentially make more units in the future, it just seems a bit excessive, especially given the neighborhood. I'm looking, standing at my deck right now, and I believe the previous online, one of my neighbors, two houses down, I can see his yard right now. It flows, all the yards flow down into his yard, and the highest point is this plat change, two houses down from where I'm looking right now. So all of that extra asphalt and concrete that's going to go in there is going to cause the water to flow everywhere but those houses because they're at the highest point on the block. So that water is going to flow in every single direction. And again, I think many people have brought it up, you know, whose responsibility truly is that to take care of that water issue that is going to happen? Because we already have a water issue in this area, so there's no way to say that there's not going to be an even bigger one once this private road gets put in. Not to mention what another previous person said about having all the trash cans out front, all the mailboxes. I mean, you're not going to get any service into that private road, so it's really not even a road. It's a driveway with just multiple properties on it. And then finally, you know, the fact that my wife and I own these two properties, you know, I think I would never dream of putting a house in my backyard. And I spoke to one of the city council members at the park, and he explained to me that that wouldn't even be allowed. And essentially, what this plat is asking for is to do exactly that, is to take a house and put another house in that house's backyard. And so I was told specifically that that's not allowed, and it sounds exactly like what is looking to be done with this change. So, you know, it'd be like if I took our two houses and tore them down and put up an eight-unit apartment complex. It's really no different than what's being asked for, two houses down from me. So I would just ask you guys to reconsider and to deny this plat change, or at least take the time to truly observe what the ramifications will be if it is, if it moves forward and, you know, all this with the water. Like I said, I can look right out my back, off my deck right now.
Mr. Khan, you're at about four minutes now, so we're going to have to cut you off.
Okay. No problem. I appreciate it. You guys have a good one, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. You had said finally, and so I was hopeful, but it went a little longer.
No problem. Thank you. Have a good one.
We have a couple of additional folks online.
We do. Mr. Alan Bates. I'll move him. Oops. Okay.
Mr. Khan is still with me.
Yeah.
Hi, sorry, I think I was muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Alan Bates. My wife and I live at 29 Old Highway 8, and the property just south of the smaller lot being included in the replat proposal. We lived, we've lived there for 29 years. This proposal, if not halted, would radically alter the look, feel, and quality of life in the former Trosseth Farm enclave in which we bought our home and have planted trees, bushes, gardens, and raised our children. All homes in this enclave are single-family homes and have backyards which join to form the significant green space in the center of the enclave. We have in common moderately valued homes with similar setbacks from the city border streets, livable, family-friendly backyards, few solid fences, a lot of greenery and gardens, and a canopy of mature trees, all of which combine to enhance a shared sense of community and give the feel of living in a unique pastoral setting enhanced by the birds and wildlife attracted to this largely uninterrupted green space created by our backyards. The detrimental impacts of this project include the destruction of the enclave's neighborhood identity and severe reduction of the appeal of our individual properties. These are reasons enough to ask the council to please halt this replating proposal, but there are many other reasons this proposal is not the right thing to do in our neighborhood. Cutting a private road into the middle of this enclave will bring noise and light pollution directly into our backyards, irreparably damaging the look, feel, and livability factors of both our property and that of our neighbors. Shoehorning four dwellings, two twin homes onto what was designed as one lot next door to us where there is currently a small middle-market home will decrease the value and appeal of our home and yard just as surely and as radically if the four-plex apartment complex was plopped down next door. I expect our property value to decline as a result, as do our neighbors. The existing small, very moderately valued home slated for destruction by the project already serves the middle housing market better than any new construction would. The enclave should not be skewered by expanded driveways under the guise of calling them a private road. Such a private road deserves six or more new dwellings in filling existing backyards and turning the orientation of the planned new dwellings away from the city street would be as environmentally altering as building a new cul-de-sac in this placement in an area where there is not enough room to support this. The city is better served if construction in the middle of existing enclaves is required to follow the existing norms of those enclaves, norms which should be protected by the city.
You're at three minutes right now.
I'm sorry.
You're at your three-minute time limit.
Okay, I think I'm off mute.
You're off mute, yeah. No, we're letting you know that you've reached your comments time limit.
Okay.
So appreciate your comments this evening.
City's better served if construction in the middle.
No, sir. Mr. Bates, your time is up.
Yes?
Your time is up.
All right.
No, you're, when your time is up, you have to stop.
Drainage problems. And I got, I'd like to close by suggest.
I hate to do that, but we are, we want to make sure everybody does get a chance to speak before it gets too dark out. Do we have our next speaker available?
Yes, Mr. Talarico. I'll move him over.
And I see we have somebody at the table as well.
Okay, he's in the room. Should I mute?
I believe I'm unmuted now. Is that correct?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Talarico.
Hello. Thank you. Paul Talarico, you get extra credit for pronouncing it right. I appreciate that.
I had to think twice.
Resident, you did great. 2954 Old Highway 8. I am part of the existing drainage problem in the neighborhood, and I am just here in brief support of my neighbors, of the spirit of what you're hearing from all of the neighbors, with the exception of a person who I actually respect as a family, and that is the developer. There is no one in support in this neighborhood of this except for the person who serves to profit financially from this. And I want to point that out. It's not a personal attack, it's just a matter-of-fact capitulation of what I believe you have been hearing from parties directly facing, directly observing, and directly experiencing the problems that exist with drainage currently and the lack of foresight and actually comprehensive planning. When you read this development that says storm sewer is private means storm water drainage and additional burden to the neighborhood's drainage is not to be dealt with essentially by this plan. And I encourage you strongly as a committee to deny this plat change, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. I believe we'll, maybe let's go to the person at the table, and then if we've got anybody else, we can bring them in. Hello and welcome.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Coles, and I live at 2996 Trosseth Road. For the most part, what I had intended to say has already been said, so I just want to, what I want to say is that you're hearing specific information on this specific development, but I think the bigger picture is not very many people in Roseville know that this plotting, plating, zoning change has happened. And my concern for you council people and what have you is that when this comes to any neighborhood, that their neighborhood is going to be changed this dramatically with the amount of density that can be achieved with this change that's happened, you have my heart because you're going to go through this again and again and again. Because no neighborhood is going to want to have this amount of density between two single-family homes. So the projection of this is going to be, you know, when this happens in any other neighborhood, the same thing is going to happen again as to what you're hearing here. The specifics are going to be different, and granted, there are a lot of issues with this particular land, as we've, as you've all heard, ad nauseam. But it's also going to be, the homes and the family homes are cherished, and you're going to get a fight back every time unless we have a moratorium, unless there's a revision of the density and it isn't this dense. It's more of a gradual thing that can be incorporated into a neighborhood and still have the neighborhood feel. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate all the hard work you guys do, and yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another online participant?
Ms. Jane Bates. Panelist.
Hello, welcome.
80 Old Highway 8. I just have to say, we have a passionate amount of community members that are speaking to the council today with a very passionate argument towards not accepting this plat redevelopment area on Old Highway 8. There are water concerns. There are concerns with losing old growth trees. When a tree is, an old growth tree is cut down, you lose approximately the feeding effort on that tree of 200 gallons of water per day. We already have a lot of water issues in our area. Cutting down old growth trees to put up an overpopulated, single-family zoning area will be exponential. The amount of water that we see in the neighborhood will be just quadrupled. It will be an amazing amount of water. So cutting down the trees is not the way to go. Adding two plots that would actually house four different families in our, right next door to my backyard, where they will be facing my home is an invasion of my property. It affects my property value. It's not the intent of the 2040 plan to do this. The 2040 plan says they want to respect the identity of our Roseville neighborhood. The 2040- The 2040 Plan would accommodate two twin homes facing Old Highway Eight, respecting the 30-foot setback, but not, not adding two new lots and six additional families to that area. That's absolutely, without, outside of the realm of possibilities of what should be allowed to happen in our historic neighborhood on Old Highway Eight. Please do not approve the plat approval. Please take time to review the goals of the 2040 Plan and bring Roseville in alliance with those plans. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else online, Mr. Trujan?
We do not.
We do not. Is there anyone else here in the chambers who wishes to speak to this item at this time? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment then. In return to council consideration, once again, thank you to everyone for your comments. I'm going, I think there were some questions asked that I'm going to attempt to address here, and hopefully I don't miss any. It was suggested that the proposed plan doesn't meet setback requirements. I would just say that when buildings are actually built, they will have to meet those requirements. So if there is any, anything shown as a building location on a plat, the main thing of a plat is the lot lines and easements and those types of legal lot description-type things, which is of concern to us. But certainly, if anything was actually built on those lots, the setbacks and the whole requirements in the zoning code would have to be met. The other thing is, was suggested that once this plat is approved, the plan could be changed. The only way the plan could be changed would be is if a new plat was proposed to replace this plat, because this plat sets out what the lots are and where the buildings can go in general. So, the only way that there could be a change at that point would be to actually go through this process again to propose a new plat or a change to the plat that would be approved if one was. Let's see here. We do have a land trust that is intended to help preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. I don't know that, that the suggestion is that this proposal is meant to be affordable housing, so that may not be necessarily relevant to this proposal. It was, I believe, proposed as a, as a market niche, whatever you want to call the missing middle. Private streets, private streets are permitted in these types of proposals. We just had one, granted, it was a single-family proposal, but it did have a private street or driveway as part of it, and that is, that is permitted by our code. And in fact, I believe there's a condition requirement in this one that, because of the length of it, that some of the units actually have to be sprinkled, if I remember correctly. And with the inclusion of a private street, the buildings would not all have to front on Old Highway Eight because the, the private street would serve as the, what the buildings could face, as I understand our code. I think from the point of view of, oh, certainly, I don't believe under our code, a house could be built in the back of an existing house. It is conceivable, I suppose, that somebody could build a utility building to the back end of their lot behind their house. We don't allow what's known as flag lots, where there's a narrow strip and then a big spot behind to do that. We eliminated that from our zoning code a long time ago, so it's correct that somebody couldn't, couldn't build a house in their backyard in that manner. But certainly, other types of structures could be built in the backyard of, of any home. I think...
Mayor.
Councilor Strong.
I'd also like to quote Brian Lloyd, if possible, on redlining, which somebody brought up, and I'd really like to make sure that that is, is that okay if I quote you, Brian? Okay. From this email that Brian said, "Redlining was part of an explicit systemic government-sponsored strategy to prevent Black Americans and other people of color from buying homes in desirable white neighborhoods. This prevented people of color from receiving bank loans to buy homes and forced them to live in undesirable, undesirable, even harmful locations." This was shared as someone said that it was, this was redlining. Need you to know what redlining really is. You're polluting industrial facilities, and as renters...
Members of the audience, please do not interrupt.
And as renters...
She's making a comment. I'm sorry. No. We've, we've closed the public comment, so we're not at a point where we're going to have back and forth with the public and the council here. Right.
I wanted to make sure there was no misstatement on the part of Mr. Burkhart or anyone else. It was not the only time in these minutes that it was shared that someone said they were redlined. And I'm actually reading from our packet from today, which indicates, which includes Mr. Lloyd's response, just to make sure that people understand that redlining is a different practice, and that redlining, sir...
Excuse me. Please, members of the audience. Members of the public, members of the public, please have some decorum. All right.
You are putting this into the official record. That is wrong.
Members of the public, please, we are in the council discussion at this point. If there are continued outbursts from the public, we can recess the meeting until folks have a chance to relax. Councilor Strong.
Just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
That redlining is about racial covenant, and we've worked hard. That is exactly what redlining is, sir.
Councilmember Strong.
Not understanding.
Councilmember Strong, thank you. Thank you. All right. Council consideration, we have the request before us. Are there any follow-up questions to staff at this time? Councilmember Eton.
I don't know who can answer about tree replacements and water control. I don't know who wants to answer those.
Maybe I'll just make a, a general comment to that the city does have a tree replacement and...
Yep, no, I had a...
Preservation.
A detailed question on that.
Oh, you have a specific, okay.
Yeah.
Just generally to that, while staff is coming up to the microphone, we do have requirements, as well as with the storm water management, that developments have to essentially not increase the runoff to off-the-property, basically, and have to, have to control storm water on their property in general terms. Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Eton, questions on...
Mr. Lloyd, our tree preservation or replacement program, has, this, what you're putting up here is in the, in the packet. It comes out to needing 76 inches of replacement. About how many trees is that?
Our standard replacement size, excuse me, is a three-inch caliber tree, so 76 would be approximately 25.
25 trees, okay. And then, I appreciate the mayor is talking about kind of what needs to happen with, with the water. Can you describe that process? Who is in charge of making sure that is designed now, and then how does that process work to ensure that it continues to work in 10 years or 20 years? That's clearly a concern for the neighbors.
We have Jesse Freyhammer.
I'm Mr. Freyhammer.
So Rice Creek Watershed is the watershed authority that reviews this plan, as well as the city of Roseville. Rice Creek has already caprocked this, which means they just some minor administrative things before the, a permit could be issued. Both agencies, us and the watershed, have maintenance agreements with the developer and subsequent owners, so there would be requirements to maintain whatever storm water facilities were approved as part of that permit into the future.
And that survives the ownership, essentially?
Correct. That gets recorded against the property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Freyhammer.
Other questions from the council?
Can I just reiterate to Jesse, Mr. Freyhammer, that we have discussed before that the overall reduction in storm water from this is, it needs to be at least 20% reduction. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the overall site was reviewed. It has to meet Rice Creek's requirement of reducing the rate by 20%. So the, the overall net runoff from the property is, is less than what it currently is today. Would be if it goes, goes through.
And that is accomplished through various best management practices which are proposed and have to be approved by, as you said, the watershed district as well as the city?
Correct.
Other questions for staff? We have the request before us, and this is, once again, the preliminary plat consideration. So, the proposal, if a preliminary plat is approved with conditions, the final plat must come back to the council and meet those conditions in order to receive final approval. If council determines that, if the preliminary plat is approved with conditions and those conditions are not met, the council is not obligated to approve a final plat. However, generally speaking, when a plat comes back for final plat and the council determines that it has met the requirements and conditions, then it stands to reason that it would have to be approved at that point because of the fact that it had met the requirements and the conditions that might have been set forward. Mr. Gudmundsson.
For correction of the mayor.
Excuse me. No, I would never dream of correcting you, mayor. But earlier in the, in the meeting, there was reference to an extension of the current 120-day preliminary plat approval deadline. As this is a subdivision, there is not a unilateral way for the council to extend the 120-day. That would be under a 60-day rule under a non-subdivision zoning matter, so...
Is it under 120 days?
It's 120 days unless the applicant agreed to an extension, in which case it could, this current decision could be extended beyond 120 days. But absent that agreement, the council is under 120-day firm deadline. That's October 8.
October, so.
Just, just to clarify, too, does the imposition of an interim ordinance while an application is pending for a subdivision toll the process for the subdivision until the end of the interim ordinance?
So long as the interim ordinance is adopted prior to preliminary approval.
Okay.
So before I...
Okay. So then we don't have to get the, if, if there's an interim ordinance, we don't have to have the property owner's approval to extend the time because we have told the process by putting an interim ordinance in effect?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Once again, we do have the request before us to approve the preliminary plat with conditions as outlined. I would certainly entertain a motion related to that request. Councilmember Wilmes.
I'm not going to put forward a motion just yet. I wanted to offer a little more conversation. I do think we have an opportunity in front of us to take a look, and if there are three folks up here that are, that are inclined to reconsider what we have previously adopted as standards, this is certainly an opportunity to take a look at that. If I was to look at a moratorium, and it's certainly something that I would want to see a resolution to before the end of this year, I'm not running for reelection. My term is up. I will be off the council at year end. If we were to look to a moratorium, it's certainly something that I think we can look to some fairly concise areas within a code that I see some issues with. I would not look to impose any type of moratorium on a creation of a subdivision that's creating lots that are 9,350 square feet or larger. That's what our, our current standard is. This would get primarily at two-family detached and two-family attached. I would want to look at Sections 100405 of code, building arrangement. I would like to review the table of allowed uses, 1004.08. In addition, tables 1004-2 and 1004-3. This is the first proposal that's come forward, and I can say, being involved in the conversations leading to creation of, of these standards, I did see some, some issues that potentially could arise. I certainly did not foresee this specific scenario, but I think it's an opportunity for us to take and revisit it. And I think that with the collective wisdom of those that have spoken, I think there is some areas with which we should take consideration and, and review before we go forward. So just some general comments.
I'm going to ask you to clarify a couple of things, too. In regard to the 1,004.05 building arrangement, what in particular would we be looking at in, in there?
When we are looking primarily Section C, when we are looking at open space areas, residential uses, how we're averaging lot area calculations, et cetera, that's something that I think would be prudent for the council to have a little more in-depth conversation and develop some standard around, more black and white standard, if you will, as to what it is. If you'll notice, actually, in this plat that is before us, one of the lots, I believe is Lot 6, is actually substandard per code, but it is allowable due to this averaging calculation, if you will. And so, certainly some of those things, I think, is prudent for the council to have a little more conversation with staff, be more clear and transparent about exactly what we're doing and what the intention is.
All right. And then in regard to the table of allowed uses...
So table of allowed uses, when we're looking at two-family detached, two-family attached, there was a change from current standard to existing standard that went from non-permitted to permitted. And I think that I would like to look at that more as a conditional use, so a case-by-case evaluation as proposals come forward rather than simply permitted and the assumption is that it goes forward absent finding. I think each of these infill developments that come forward, and there will be others, merit special consideration and special review that the conditional use process would afford.
Right. And then, I don't have Table 1,004.02, but I have 1,004.03.
Yeah, 1,004-3 gets into minimum lot area. I think that, in essence, would tie back with the conversation on building arrangement, Section C.
Because it refers to that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you repeat what section you're talking about?
So that's, that's Table 1,004-3, which is in part of 1,004.08?
Thank you.
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine.
Sorry.
That's what I get for not putting on the cheaters.
The book in the cover is from 2017.
Ah, yes. The old one. And just a couple of comments in relation to, to the Councilwoman Wilmes. I appreciate you elaborating on that. As I've been looking at this and thinking about it, I believe that under 1,004.05 building arrangement, that this proposal is really covered by A and not by B or C, because I, as I understand it, under B, for instance, which I don't think you're suggesting B applies, but that would, that would be around a common courtyard with access for parking to the rear, et cetera. That's clearly not what, not what's proposed here. But C also talks about being along a street, but with common open space to the rear or side of buildings, as is common with townhouse developments. And as I understand this, there is no proposed open space that's common or shared amongst these developments or this, these lots. It appears that A applies, which is that there isn't a common open space, but rather it's achieved through the individual lots. So I'm not sure that reviewing 1,004.05 as it relates to this particular project necessarily is applicable, at least how you've been talking about it. But I will say that I do tend to agree that the proposal does include a substandard lot in terms of the, the language, the plain language of the table 1,004-point, or 1,004-3 that you mentioned, which lists minimum lot areas and minimum widths, and then makes a reference back to building arrangement. But once again, if we, if we determine that A applies, building arrangement doesn't seem to allow for that, or it doesn't specifically state that that averaging can be done in A as it does specifically state in B and C. And that's where, so I'm, I'm less concerned about that. But I would agree that this proposal, if it were to go forward, would have to correct that substandard lot, which could, I think, be made a condition of approval potentially. Councilmember Wilmes.
So from my perspective, if we were to go forward and, and review some of these things by putting a moratorium in place, that moratorium isn't necessarily specific to this proposal.
Right.
This is a, this is a review of what we have in code. We don't know what's going to come down the road. It is an opportunity for us to step back and take a second look at code and try and flush some of those things out. That's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from with a more in-depth... That's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from with a more in-depth conversation with respect to building arrangement.
All right. No, thank you. Appreciate that. Other thoughts from the council and/or motions, since we're at that consideration point? Councilmember Graff.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the proposal, proposed Brahma Vista preliminary plat based on the content of the SARCA, public input, the recommendation and the findings of the planning commission and city council deliberation with the following, and they're listed as 1, 2, and 3.
All right. There's a motion. Is there a second to that motion? I will second the motion for purposes of discussion. And Councilmember Graff is the maker of the motion, discussion to the motion?
Well, first of all, thank you for all your comments, and I appreciate us taking an extra couple of weeks here to, to review it. I researched this information. I researched it thoroughly with staff and other, other sources. And one of the reasons we have this type of housing is, land trust was mentioned, and land trust would allow people who have been excluded from homeownership in the past, I'm not talking about this development in particular, but that is one way that they could purchase property in Roseville, and they've been excluded for a variety of reasons. This, if we don't pass the, if we don't keep this type of housing, it will jeopardize our ability to have the land trust. It will jeopardize our cooperation with Habitat for Humanity, who is agreeing to do that. So I'm supporting this, and I think, I think it's something that will, in the long run, to overcome some of the past restrictive covenants that we've had in deeds in Roseville.
Thank you. I'm the second here, and using my time, I'm going to propose an amendment to the motion. And that proposed amendment would be to add a fourth condition requiring Lot 6 of the proposal to meet the minimum area requirement in Table 1,004-3 of 5,500 square feet. I believe that can be accomplished by making adjustment to Lot 7, to the lot line between those two lots. And so that would be my proposed amendment, which I make as a motion to amend. Is there a second to that, or is it accepted as a friendly?
I would accept it.
All right. That makes it easier.
Mayor.
Councilmember Ratten.
Would that be better to say that all lots in this would need to meet 5,500 minimum instead of just Lot 6?
No, that's, that's a very good point. I think specifically Lot 6 is currently not meeting it, but I think that's fair to say that the amendment should be that the condition is that all lots meet the minimum square footage and minimum lot width requirements as outlined in the table 1,004-3. And I guess I would further state that the council's interpretation of our own code is that you can't average lots who are laid out under A, under 1,004.05, that you have to meet the minimum requirements in that arrangement.
Yes.
Just so there's clarity for staff and for applicants going forward. Is that accepted as?
That is accepted.
A change to the, and does the council understand what the motion is then now? So the motion would be to approve the plat, preliminary plat, with three conditions as outlined, adding a fourth condition that all the lots meet the minimum width and dimensional requirements of Table 1,004-3, and further clarifying that this particular proposal is under arrangement A, under 1,004.05, which does not state that it allows the averaging of areas or other dimensional requirements in the interpretation of the council of our own code for future reference. Comfortable with that? All right. Further discussion on the motion? Councilmembers? As amended. Councilmember Strong.
Is it possible to add, or is this the proper time to add fencing and other restrictions within this in order to make it?
Certainly, to the extent that those are appropriate conditions of a plat, I don't know that they are. So we just would need to know that. Councilmember Wilmes.
If we had taken a step back to look at some of the things that I suggested earlier, and potentially that these developments are considered as a conditional use, that absolutely would be something that you could look at.
I'm trying to think, when we did the plat off of County Road B and Eustis, we did, I believe we provided direction to staff. I don't know if we added conditions to the preliminary plat approval. Perhaps staff could speak to that at this point. Because I certainly don't want to put conditions on a plat approval that aren't appropriate for a plat approval.
The, the approval of that plat of County Road B did include a condition regarding installation of suitable privacy fencing at the, at the end of the private driveway, the shared driveway, to mitigate headlights going on to the yards of the adjacent properties there. So that is something that is typical of plat proposals.
Does our attorney concur?
Mayor Council, yeah, if there's a particular, unique characteristic to a, to a plat proposal, such as one that elicited evidence that there would be headlights into the back windows of homes, then it would be appropriate. As with any condition, the council will want to have an articulable basis for including it, as opposed to other plats, subdivisions of a similar nature that did not have such conditions attached.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Strong, did you want to add a condition to that effect?
I want to make it sure it's articulable. As far as, especially into the, since the direction of the homes, it's different than what the direction of the other homes. It seems appropriate to put fencing so that there's not facing into the next door neighbor's homes.
This would be to the east of the property, generally?
Mm-hmm.
Because the driveway is large.
The east was to the south.
Right. Yeah.
As well as to the south.
It's a sort of a northwest to southeast orientation driveway. Is that something, you want to move that as a condition to have?
I'd like to move it as a condition.
All right. Is there a second to that motion to add that condition for the screening on the east end related to headlights? I'm not hearing a second. All right. Do we have any other discussion in relation to the amended motion as it's been outlined?
This is just for your amendment so far.
No, this is for the amended motion. The motion, the amendment was accepted as, as an amendment by the maker of the original motion.
Before we get to that, I would like to note that nearly every single person here has brought up concerns about water, and I know that there have been some processes that's outlined in our packet here, and the neighbors have had some contact. But I would hope that our staff can reconnect with the neighborhood, understanding that this is a major problem for neighbors. This property here, because of watershed rules, should not be adding to that problem. Much of the problem is upstream and uphill to the south and to the east. And I understand it's going to be hard because it requires the city to take additional easement in people's backyards, and would require funding partially from property owners potentially. So I know it's a big deal, but I hope that we can work to address what is clearly a pretty serious problem that has a lot of people concerned and with kind of property damage described one person by the sitting water and things like that. So that we will take steps, again, to reengage this very engaged neighborhood on that issue.
Other discussion?
I have another question. I was just wondering if there's an opportunity for city investment when there is already going to be storm sewer and other things being addressed on, if there were to be on this lot at this time? Is there some way that the city could further invest in doing some other mitigation efforts for the greater community?
I think, based on what I understand of the previous discussions, a lot of what's been proposed is off this site, so it's not something that would happen on this property per se. Obviously, there are the requirements for this property. As I understand it, there were some proposals related to properties to the east and to the south, and some easements and some other mitigation measures. But I don't know that that is linked necessarily to this particular proposal, so I don't know that we could, we could make that connection necessarily. Certainly, this proposal's stormwater mitigation must stand on its own and meet all the requirements as we've outlined. Councilman Ratten.
As we look at this more, one of the big things I've boiled down to with 1.27 acre, if I remember correctly, whether we were dealing with the old zoning code or the current one, if it was single-family homes, five single-family homes could legally be here. And we would have some of the same homes coming in at angles into backyards and sideyards as they are presently there. So there would be change no matter what. So for me, really, the question is five versus seven. And, and so that's, that's the question, is that big enough to pause all of this and other work on the zoning code stage two or not? So like, that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about, is five versus seven, a big tripping point, five, seven, five homes versus seven.
Other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I guess I would just add that I think that was my consideration as well. And I certainly respect the, the feeling of the folks immediately adjacent to this, who have expressed concerns about homes going into essentially space that was facing their backyard, and that is something that we have actually approved in Roseville since there was a Roseville. That's, that's part of subdivision of property, and it's, it's something that I think we all understand is a change to folks who are there, and is not something that necessarily, you know, is, is going to be potentially addressed by relooking at some other standards as, as been potentially proposed here, as I can understand it. But it is something that, that has been approved in Roseville before, and I think that we have that, that precedent, and this has also been approved, these types of changes have been approved in neighborhoods with larger lots and a number of them. And we've actually even did take a process a few years ago under an interim ordinance to review large lot neighborhoods and to see if we wanted to do anything different with the standards at that time, and we did have a public process, and the outcome of that was to not put anything different in place than our code currently has or had at that time, which is largely what our code has now. And so I, you know, completely understand the concerns, and it's, it's certainly not something that we haven't heard before in, in similar situations. And we try to do the best we can in adopting our code and requirements to mitigate these issues. We talked about stormwater management is much better than it was five, 10, 15, 20 years ago when other prior developments were done. And so the expectation is that this development will meet those requirements and go forward, meeting the requirements, not just on day one, but throughout its life. Also, we put in place setbacks, backyard setbacks, side yard setbacks, those sorts of things, and those are all, have to be met by this proposal, and those are all not changed for this proposal as to what they were in the code prior to including LDR, including twin homes or duplexes in the LDR zone. So the, the fact that they're twin homes or duplexes is not changing how close they can be to property lines, and as Councilmember Ratten noted, a single-family development certainly could be proposed with those same setbacks and have buildings in the same locations. So denying this subdivision doesn't necessarily get to that particular issue. So, and I think there are a couple of other things I just wanted to note. Oh, sort of the, the notion that, and I want to be respectful in saying this, but the notion that this is unusual amounts of density in this particular corner of Roseville, it's probably not going to show up very well, but I did do an exercise where I did take a triangle, the shape and size of that corner of Roseville, and I was able to find over 20 instances where very similar density combinations with single-family and multifamily and middle density could be applied. And so this really isn't something that is unique to this part of the community, and I guess what I would say is that we've, we've had these same sorts of tensions in other parts of Roseville, and we've been dealing with them as a council as long as I've been on the council. And what we do try to do is we do, it was mentioned before, sort of having buffers and having transitions. The challenge we have is that we don't have a transition or buffer between low density and low density, and this is what this is, low density next to low density. Usually where we're putting transitions and buffers is when there's higher intensity, such as medium density or high density next to, or business-type activities next to low density. And then we, we do have more stringent requirements for setbacks and building heights and those sorts of things that we, we put into our code to make sure we're addressing those things. So I will say, our zoning code isn't perfect, but it is an effort over a lot of consideration and through a lot of experience with prior situations to try to address as many of the issues as, as we know come up in these situations. And also, I should note, just in terms of conformance with our comprehensive plan, it is a requirement of our zoning code update that we just adopted, that it be in conformance with our comprehensive plan, and the council did make that determination as part of that process. And so I don't think there can be a question that it is in conformance with our comprehensive plan, just on that basis. I believe that is everything I was thinking about saying at this point. Any other council discussion? Councilmember Wilmes.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I, I think you're, you're right in some of your context, mayor. We no longer have low-density residential. It was largely eliminated, and going forward, you, you will not have that. And so this certainly is something that will set precedent, it will set precedent citywide. It is something that was done with, frankly, very little input throughout the, the process and the mechanism by with it, with which it unfolded. This plat, if this plat had come forward under the old zoning code, you may actually be looking as few as three, not, not five, certainly not five, particularly given the access that would be required and the lot design standards that had been in place. So would perhaps disagree a little bit with that five versus seven analysis, so.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Ratten.
Mayor, I'd like to, one of the things in your amendment, you mentioned the 5,500 square foot minimum for all lots, and we talked about that. I would like to note that I also believe that our zoning code would not allow for averaging this scenario because it does not have that open space. I just wanted to say out loud that I don't, I don't think that that works in a situation if we need to add clarity to our code to ensure that that is going forward. That's what, what happens, then I want to make sure we do that in the future, here in their future.
All right. Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? We have the motion before us as amended to approve the preliminary plat with the now four conditions, including the fourth condition that was added as part of this process. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes four to one with Councilmember Wilmes in opposition. This item then will come back at a point when a final plat is put forward, and we'll have to weigh it against the conditions that have been outlined here. Thank you again, everybody, for your participation in the process, and I know it's difficult when things happen that don't seem to concur with your point of view on things, but believe me, it's not that we didn't hear what you were saying. I think we were trying to address as best we could, either through existing requirements, what your concerns were, or through, as Councilmember Ratten indicated, maybe following up on some of those existing drainage issues that, that don't directly relate to this development, but then also, you know, taking into account as best we can if we need to add conditions or clarifications in terms of what was brought forward through the public process. So I don't want to diminish the public process or for anyone to feel that they weren't heard in this process. It's just simply the case that we've considered all of the input and all of the parameters by with which we make the decision, and we've made that, those conclusions this evening. So thank you again, everyone. With that, council want to take about a five-minute break, and we're approaching our eight o'clock normal break time. All right?
Sure. Five-minute break.
Sure.
Five minute break. We're back from a short break. I just do have to double check with Mr. Trudgeon on our Zoom meetings. Do we also like turn off the mics and everything for the folks participating remotely when we're on a break like that?
I'm not sure if they're muted. I think only the.
Maybe everything is because the, the system is just muted. Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Otherwise, otherwise some folks at home maybe had some entertainment. But anyway, we are back from our break. I appreciate everybody's expeditiousness in, in doing that. We have a couple more business items and then our consent agenda and some meeting minutes. So hopefully we can move through those in a very businesslike fashion here. This is one of the highlights of our council year, maybe if not for the folks at home, certainly for the folks in the room, or some of them. And that is to receive the recommended city manager budget for fiscal and calendar year 2023. And I'm not going to do a bunch more by way of introduction. I'll just turn it over to City Manager Trudgeon for him to make this introduction of his proposed 2023 budget and tax levy. Mr. Trudgeon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the buildup. Hopefully I can deliver the highlight as much as possible here. I'll be walking through a presentation on my budget here. I'm joined with our Finance Director, Michelle Petrick, really here to answer any questions that I might not be able to if you have any tonight. You have detailed information in your packet, of course. I'm just going to try to keep the highlights, but certainly we can drill down to some more specifics as you would like. So, as I said here tonight, to bring forward some information for the 2023 city of Roseville budget, as you know, tonight is just to receive the budget and answer any initial questions that you have. There'd be no formal action tonight. Before I get into the details of proposed budget, I wanted to share a couple of general observations. This budget was doubly difficult this year because of the impact of inflation that we're all experiencing out there in the world. And the spikes in supply costs, fuel costs and, and other higher costs, as well as the supply chain disruption makes things very difficult to get and predict when you're going to get them and what those costs are going to be. So as a result of the normal pressures that we would face in a typical budget year, the inflationary budget, the inflation is really impacting this budget more so than in any other case. And I would dare say that it's probably been the worst inflationary period in 40 years here that we're facing here. So that, just to put it a little bit in context, on a related note, there is upward pressure on employee wages, not just because of inflation, but also the low unemployment rate, recruiting and retaining employees have proved very difficult. I'm sure the industries that you're in, you see the same thing happening there. And as a result, pay needs to go up across the board to attract and retain employees. That's something that we continue to struggle with as other municipalities as well. So we typically try to address this fact with a COLA or cost of living adjustment. In the past years, we've given between zero to 3%, depending on the circumstances around there. Some of the benchmarks we have used in the past is the CPI from Minneapolis and St. Paul. And if you look at measurement from July 22 to 21, July 21, the inflation rate got up, went up to 8.2%. The other standard that we use is the ECI or the Employment Cost Index for state employee workers, and that's only gone up 3.2% June 21 to June 2022. So obviously there's a lot of outward pressures on there. This, this as a matter of fact, we want to make sure we're keeping pace with inflation the best we can. But in addition, the job market out there, we want to make sure we remain competitive as an employer. Having said all that, it's just quite impossible to meet anywhere close to what the CPI index is. And so this budget does propose a 3% cost of living adjustment for, for all employees. I would note that we are locked in with our union contracts already for 2023 and '24 in some cases at 3%. So we're doing 3% across the board. The final thing I just want to mention, if you recall, last year we spent a lot of conversation in the budget memo about our equity work. And that was primarily because we had brought forward some additional dollars and new initiatives that we're going to start off our equity work in earnest. You will not see much conversation about the equity work directly in this budget document, but I want you to know that equity work is still continuing as part of the city. We are putting $135,000 of specific equity work throughout the organization, which would include training, event support, translation services, some software help. So that's going to continue. We had put $126,000 in last year's budget specifically for those items, and this will be $135,000. So the, the fact that I'm not maybe highlighting that as much doesn't mean it's not important priority. It's something we'll continue to do, but now that's a regular part of the budget process here, that'll be included. And what I try to do with these presentations is highlight the new things that are here or the things that have changed considerably for that. So that's kind of the scope that we're looking at. Earlier this year, the department head and leadership team met and spent about a half a day to discuss organizational priorities that should be addressed as part of the 2023 budget. As you can see from this graphic, we identified a total of six organizational priorities. And this is really just kind of a guiding post as we put together our budgets to present to you from what we see from inside the organization, what we should focus on. And yeah, as you can see, they're very broad categories, but we did try to incorporate the best we could, some of these thoughts into the budget process. So one was people, or in this case, meaning employees, equity inclusion, elevate environmental sustainability, foster community success, expand engagement and provide a modern and sustainable infrastructure. So as I mentioned, we did try to put that into the budget the best we could, if we could fit it in, given the resource limitation. And I thank the department head team for spending a half a day. It was a good conversation that we had, and we would actually have opportunities to do more of those things. It was really a good out of the box thinking that we could think forward instead of trying to be reactive. So for the 2023 budget, I focused on three main strategies to really tackle, as I said, a very difficult budget year, knowing that we had continuing growing needs. So one was investment in infrastructure. The second was investment to maintain city programs and workforce. And third was a strategic use of financial reserves and grant funding. These are very similar to what we've approached in the past, if you recall, but we really wanted to focus on those three things as we put together the budget. So I'll speak more about the strategy shortly as I get into the presentation, and there's greater detail in my budget memo. As I said, I will state, say at a higher level here, but there's additional detail in there. So let me first provide an overview to the numbers tied to the budget. The total budget proposed is $63,390,240. This is about an increase of 8.6%. The budget increases primarily to two factors, I would say, large factors. One was just be the increase in personnel and supply costs, as I mentioned, inflation and other pressure, upward pressure, as well as increased capital purchases. As you know, the overall budget covers tax-supported and fee-supported elements. So it's not 8%, 8.6% of a tax increase, it's a spending increase. For our capital expenditure items, we usually have dollars set aside that we, on a year-to-year basis, it fluctuates in what we spend and don't spend on that. So you'll see that number go up and down over a period of time, and I'll, I have a graphic that shows that. Just as, as far as a breakdown of what this particular budget is doing as far as kind of the, the basic functions of the city. On the left is a table showing the breakdown of how the city funds from the budget would be spent. As you can see, our biggest expenditures go towards water, sewer and stormwater utilities, cost of about $18 million. Police services account for 10.9 and park and rec coming at about 9.7. On the right is a chart showing that same information, just a little bit different information showing how that is. And I would note that about 28% of our budget goes towards utilities and 25% goes towards public safety. That includes police and fire. So this slide shows the actual up and downs of the budget over the years from 2019. So I tried to take a snapshot of the upcoming year and the past four years here. So you can see we ranged in 2019 at $55 million, went up to $62.7 million in '21, went down last year and back up again. So once again, that often reflects the ups and downs of the capital expenditures that we have. So specifically to the levy, this shows the amount of levy we've had since 2019, once again, kind of that same look back. We're proposing a total levy of $26.6 million in 2023. That's an increase of $1.7 million of levy. And you can see the trend, obviously it goes up over a period of time, and that's something that we do pay attention to. Certainly we can have expanded tax base, but really the levy that people are paying has gone up, and that's something that we're all sensitive to over a period of time. Next slide there. So if you look at it as, as a percentage increase, something that we usually use as a benchmark, you can see over time where in past years, I've tried to keep it really around 5% or less, if, if we can help it here, just to try to moderate that as much as possible. This year, it is 7%. That number, we had to work at to get it to that number. I think the initial staff requests were about a, would result in 11 and a half percent levy increase. And I, I would say from what the department has presented, that wasn't unreasonable asked. It was nothing really crazy that was being asked, but just knowing that we needed to tighten our belts a little bit and look at alternative sources, we were able to get it down to 7%. So that's a little higher than I think we would all like to see, but I think it also reflects the reality of maybe where we are, given the cost increases and the desire to continue our services at the same level. So here's kind of a more high-level summary of the budget, breaking down the property tax and fee-supported, the budget by the type of services or categories, personnel services, supplies, other services, capital outline and so on. You can see where that $26 million tax levy goes towards, primarily towards operations, some towards capital and a little bit less going to debt. As far as the new levy of the $1.7 million, but $110,000 net will go towards shoring up our capital funds. And the remaining part will go towards an investment to maintain city programs and workforce. And that's a big number, $1.6 million. That does cover a lot of things, which I'll go over here in a second. So what you can, what that results in is a 7% levy increase or $7.18 per month increase for the median valued home at $335,000. Let me go to the next slide here with this information, and you can see how the median valued home has increased dramatically, especially compared to last year, but it's been going up in 2019, median valued home, which we use as our benchmark was 254.9. It is now $335,000. Compared to last year at $296,000, we had an increase of about $38,900 in value for the median valued home or 11.5% increase. That's pretty, pretty large. So as you can see, as, as the median value goes up, there's going to be more paid taxes. But what we've been able to demonstrate here with the 7% levy increase, that would lead to about $86.16 increase from the 2022 levy amount for the median valued home or $7.18 per month. And this is just for the city levy. Obviously, this is the median valued home. There's a lot of other factors that go into it, so this is going to be different for everybody here. But in the past, we've used this as a benchmark just to kind of measure from year to year kind of where we stand. So let's talk about the investment in infrastructure. It's pretty straightforward. Some of this we have talked about before. So we are putting an additional $200,000 of new levy dollars towards the police vehicle and equipment fund. This continues what we did from last year, putting that additional levy support to help stabilize that fund that will give us a very lengthy time where that's, that fund is stable enough to continue. We'll need to continue to work on that into the future. The idea here with this $200,000 and the $200,000 from last year, we'll repurpose that levy into operations, help pay for the firefighters, the six firefighters that we got as part of the SAFER grant. We wanted to purposely build levy capacity into our budget, so when we got to, when the grant expired, we had some dollars already to go on that. Otherwise, we made some minor adjustments to the admin, equipment fund and finance equipment fund. We did talk about these as part of the CIP presentation, so these should be somewhat familiar, as well as the IT fund, and this is the capital side of the IT fund, not the operations. We felt we could take away the $100,000 of levy support from that, and that fund We felt we could take away the $100,000 of levy support from that, and that fund will be fine for many, 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 many years. So with that, that nets out to about $110,000 of new levy dollars we'd be putting towards capital, equipment purchases. Now, this next one, investment in maintaining city programs and workforce, there's a lot of information on there, and in the packet, there's a lot more detailed information. But let me just try, if I could, just very generally go over a couple of these things. So under reclassification of employees, I'm showing several positions going from part-time to full-time. I would want to note that the digital social media specialist, which is a position we created as kind of a limited-term employee until the end of this year as part of the communications of the organization, I am proposing to make that full-time position as a permanent full-time position. And so what you see there is the cost of levy support. We're still relying a little bit on communications dollars, but we want to add some additional levy. We added 50,000 levy previously in 2022. We also have a few reclassifications to better reflect the actual job duties. Those are the ones kind of at the bottom of that category there, of all a couple thousand dollars adjustment. I would also note that we want to reclassify a current detective position into a detective sergeant position. So we're not adding another officer, we're just changing the classification. We used to have detective sergeant in our investigations division. When we created the CAT team, we moved a sergeant position from that into the CAT. And I think for the community action team, that's really served us well to have that on-the-ground leadership every, every day, but we're finding that we're falling behind in investigations. There is just a lieutenant and then, I think, seven detectives, if I recall correctly, about seven. So we like to have just one more supervisory position in there. So once again, we're not adding an officer, we are just repurposing an existing detective. I would also note that we're making some reorganizations in building inspections. This does not impact the levy at all, because it's paid out of the community development fund, but we're not adding any staff, in fact officially eliminating a position that's been on the budget for the last couple of years in anticipation. The extra staffing was in anticipation of Rosedale and some other developments. And we're moving stuff around, so we're actually eliminating the code enforcement officer, but really authorized for one less than we have in the past. But as I said, that does not have any direct levy impact. We're just repurposing the existing staff. Under new personnel, some of these may look familiar, and you may not think they're necessarily new personnel, but they are from the budgeting perspective. One is school resource officer. As you know, we agreed to have a second school resource officer. The school district pays 2/3 about of that position. We have 1/3 of that. I noted it here because it is new on the budget, but you'll see a zero levy in support. I am proposing to use ARPA dollars for that, and we'll talk about that a little bit later for this initial year. We would like to do some rearrangement in our CSO and cadet positions here. We currently have three CSOs and one cadet position. We'd like to create a second cadet position, so have two cadets and two CSOs. We feel that gives us a better advantage to attract candidates. Cadets are full-time, they get benefits, and there's other programs we can help them grow into a future police officer that just gives us more flexibility on the ground to be able to do that. So we still have a complement of four people, but this, instead of three and one, means you just have four CSOs and no cadet. We'd have two cadets and two CSOs. Similarly, we like to add another fire department cadet. As you may have seen or heard, we did just hire a new fire cadet just recently, and we're really trying to outreach in the community, get younger people involved in the fire profession, and certainly try to diversify our ranks as much as possible. So this is another good way to do that at a very low cost. So we are funding for that first one a full year, and then funding for the second one as well in 2023. So that's what those costs represent. And the other position that we're adding is a sustainability specialist. As you know, we've all been focusing a lot and having conversations about environmental sustainability and the importance of that. We've been ramping up some staff assistance over the years by using some grants and an internship. We think it's time to dedicate a position to this totally. You'll see that the levy impact is $33,000. That is because it's going to be shared between, the cost will be shared between community development. There is some value for community development to have this position work, whether it's development proposals or other initiatives that we're doing, and then also paid from the recycling funds. So it's 1/3, 1/3, 1/3, just about. So if the actual levy impact, it's about 1/3 of that cost. I would mention, there are two positions that you do not see in here. One is in the fire department, inspector, deputy fire marshal, to help provide some assistance to the multitude of inspections that they have. One challenge that we continue to have is we have on-duty firefighters, inspectors, this is specific classification, do the inspections. But as they do 24-hour shifts, they might be on one day and off a couple of days, so it's hard to have a level of consistency or sometimes even urgency to get things done. So we're looking at, in the future at least, trying to have some position in place that be more of an 8:00 to 4:30 type of job Monday through Friday, and really, really work through that. And at this point, we've been talking more as a civilian position in there. That would also do the fire code, but as well as just help with the housing inspections. We would still have firefighters that would be inspectors, help supplement, but this would probably be the lead person. In any case, Chief Rosenhad and I had a lot of conversations about this, but just could not fit that into this particular budget. So that's something, I understand the need to have it, but we just couldn't fit it in the budget. So I expect that will come back in future budgets. The second one was the police department and the command staff, actually maybe changing lieutenants into commanders and adding a third one. We currently have two lieutenants and having a third one. I think we need to vet that out a little bit more and certainly look at the cost. It is important to recognize, we have been adding a lot of officers over the years, so as you add more officers, you need some more supervision, and we haven't really paid too much attention to that with more on the entry-level officers. So that's not right right now, but that's something that I just want to flag for you that might be coming up in future budget years, but at this point, we're not funding Okay, so down to some of the really big costs, the compensation adjustments. You can see the wage step increases a total of about $420,000. This is kind of our built-in compensation plan, where you have seven steps. Typically, you hire somebody at the lower level of that, assuming that they have good performance reviews and meet the goals of their positions, they'll take, on their anniversary date, one year, they'll progress through the compensation steps. As I said, we have a total of seven, so after a certain amount of years, they are maxed out, and they really don't get any more step increases. The only increases they would possibly get would be cost of living allowance increases. So this is something you see in the budget every single year. It's kind of somewhat of a fixed cost. It's really determined the number of employees you have and where people are in that range. The people that have been here for a long time do max out, but as you churn, you have people starting over again. And this is a net number, because every year it does change a little bit here, but that's the amount that we have to dedicate new levy dollars to help pay for that. Kind of on a related note, and we talked about this already, the 3% COLA does add $452,000. That's for the levy support. There are some dollars that would be paid out of the fee budget, that's, you know, utility workers and some of those, those persons that are paid through non-levy dollars. So this represents the levy amount, and this also does include the union COLA increases. This is the total amount of dollars. Couple other things that are really impacting us, and I alluded to this earlier, is not to directly call out parks and rec, but I think across the board, we are trying to really make sure that our pay is competitive. But this is a really big item that all parks departments have struggled, is making sure you find seasonal work. I know many of you are very familiar with how that works. We are paying on average about $11 an hour. We all know $15 an hour probably doesn't cut it in some markets here. What this would do would start elevating what we're paying our seasonals from 11, an average of 11 to 14. So we still have some catch-up to do, but trying to do this over a period of years. This is really critical for us to get the seasonals, and as I look at our seasonals and young population in our community, that's a really great way to diversify our workforce, bring a lot of experience difference. So we really need to make sure we're competitive on that. This is long overdue, to be quite honest, but I think it's really critical as we speak now, as we want, as we look at the economy and the job situation, we really need to make sure we step up and do that. Through the hard work at the park and rec department, they were able to put together the programs and recruit people, but it's proving to be extremely challenging. Similar thing, we have, I think, two police interns, just a slight adjustment in their pay. Once again, it'd be competitive. These interns can turn into CSOs or cadets and future officers. So this is one of the multiple ways we try to bring new faces into the police department and recruit more diverse population. Also, you'll see in here, the fire department advanced life support. That's something that the councils have already agreed to, and we're implementing, I believe, this week. We're hoping to implement that officially, but we need to put it in the budget. It's new for the budget, so we need to put it in the budget for 2023, so that is a new cost. And then finally, without getting too much into the details here, the inflationary cost for supplies, operations, and contracts net out at about $310,000. This is something we see every single year, whether it's contracts or prices of things that go up. So that gets us to a grand total of $1.6 million. I would point out that that number does not include increased fuel costs, and I'll just talk about that here in a second. So while this doesn't have any levy impact, I do want to talk about this because we are leveraging existing grant dollars and in some cases, reserves to help minimize the impact to levy. Several of these, as you can see in the reserves, are really talking about one-time or infrequent costs. With the grant funding, there are some that we are eventually going to have to make decisions on that will lead to future levy support. So this is really an approach to try to fit what we think are important initiatives into this year's budget, or to continue what we're already doing, understanding in the future, we need to kind of ease into these or have that conversation whether we still want to have them. So we'll start off with the embedded social worker. As we know, we've been very proactive in trying to bring social workers into the police department. We were able to receive a grant from Ramsey County. We leveraged that and are using ARPA in this particular year, 2022, to pay for that second embedded social worker. And I know we've seen some great results as a part of that, and we'll continue to in the future. And at the time, the council had talked about trying to set aside ARPA dollars for 2022, 23, and 24, so this is just continuing that. At some point, we're going to need to make, you know, a decision on how we want to fund that long-term. Also, under ARPA, in our previous discussions, we did set aside about $500,000 for water infrastructure projects, and we are proposing to utilize that $500,000 we put aside for water projects that will occur in 2023. So that, that really helps the fund balance there. That's something that we'll need to continue to look at, but that really relieves some pressure, gives us some more breathing room down the road, so it's not a direct increase in rates as much as they would be if we didn't use those dollars. We also put in, so those are the two ones that you've kind of are familiar with. The other ones here, I'm talking about our new, new things, so we certainly would want to make sure the council is agreeable to this. But one is the housing navigator. As you know, we've just received a grant, once again, from Ramsey County that funds it, I believe, September to August of next year, so September '22 to August '23. We have put some dollars in to allow for that position to remain with the city through the end of '23. We do feel that we're able to get a renewal of that grant, and that's what we'll try to do. We wanted to put dollars in the budget just in case we weren't successful in that, just to show that. If we don't need them, we won't use the ARPA dollars for that, but we wanted to put that in there. So moving on then with the SROs. As you know, we talked about this before, we have a second SRO. To help bridge some of the costs, making sure we can continue to do that without impacting the levy negatively, we are proposing to use the ARPA funds for the second SRO, at least in 2023. And we can talk about maybe adding that back to the levy in '24 or not. Similarly, we are doing some massive increases in our wellness programs and our police departments, and I would say both police and fire are really leaders in what we're doing with our officers and firefighters, but we need to continue to do more on that. So we're looking to really up our game in the police department by adding $30,000, and once again, using ARPA dollars to help bridge us. This really is kind of a long-term investment. Certainly helps the officers right now, dealing with things, but it, the hope is that it really reduces the PTSD claims that a lot of cities are paying out, and beyond just being the right thing to do for the person, it's also to the advantage of the city financially to make sure we're trying to do what we can. So once again, using the ARPA dollars here in '23 to help bridge that. And then the metro INET increase, as you know, we've gone to separate joint powers, authority, and costs are going up to kind of right-size that organization and reorganize them. We've had extensive meetings as the board, I serve as the board chair as well, and there is a significant cost increase trying to rip some of that Band-Aid off to get them the right size. And our total costs, I think, is $133,000 or something like that increase. There'll be continued increases in the future, but nothing that's significant. So we, once again, just to ease into it a little bit, we do want to use ARPA dollars to help pay for it. All of these, as you recall with ARPA, we did take the standard deduction, so we don't have to follow the strict guidelines of ARPA, but we really try to follow the spirit of those, and all these fundings are certainly in the spirit of ARPA and the guidance here, so we try to stay consistent with that. Now, onto the use of reserves. We have three things that do not happen on a regular basis, so one would be a compensation study. We have allocated $130,000 to do that study in 2023. Our last study was 2012, 2013. I know when I first began, the city manager implemented that in the summer of 2013, and we're overdue. It's been about 10 years since we've done that, and then certainly with the employment market right now, it's important that we really look to make sure we're competitive. They're not cheap, and they become even more expensive to implement once you have the plan done. So we're looking to take the first step, let's get the plan sorted out, and then we can have council conversations on how we implement that and what that looks like. So we're proposing to do that and take that out of general fund reserves. Also, our general fund reserves is recodification of our codes. We have old codes in here. We want to make sure our codes are up to date and easily accessible through the web. We do have this line item in the 2022 budget. It does not look like we'll get a significant start if it started all this year. We had reserves pegged for this in the '22 budget, so it's really not levy dollars wasted. So we like to put it in the budget, because we do expect that the very least is going to go into '23. So we're estimating that cost of about $60,000 to get that up and running, go through all the code, and fix inconsistencies or outdated references. I think when we're talking like tonight about the zoning code, that's very specific based on policy, but we're talking about some outdated codes or contradictory codes that we want to make sure that they're called out and have those conversations. So all that would be helpful for us, and that's what that would cover. Then last, the general fund is dollars, $30,000 for strategic planning. This is really the thought process, once we're done with the visioning process, that will go into next year, that we'll have a strategic plan. Might not be till later in the year, but we wanted to propose some dollars in there as a placeholder, once again, out of reserves. If we decide not to do it, or the timing's off, we can put it in future budget years. But the idea is to have this broad vision, right? And then we'd have a strategic plan, that'd be a five-year plan, or a three-to-five- or seven-year plan, that we would actually take some specific actions. So this is providing dollars for that, once again, out of the reserves. Then finally, on this chart here, the excess cash reserve fund, as you know, that's dollars we put aside that, from other funds that are exceeding their maximums. We are proposing, and we did suggest this as part of the CIP presentation, that $200,000 be swept from the excess cash reserve fund to help the park and rec vehicle and equipment fund. This helps stabilize that fund. Once again, that's something we'll continue to need to look at, but this helps stabilize it. And finally, out of the excess cash reserve fund, looking at the overage and the potential fuel costs. We have a regular amount of dollars we have for fuel on our expected usage and our usual expected rate already built in the budget, but we just, not knowing what the market's going to be like at the start of the year, and when we put these numbers together, this was in May and June, so the spikes in the fuel is very high. So we estimated about $126,000 of additional fuel if they were to stay as the high prices as they were earlier this summer. Once again, this is pegged to be used from the excess cash reserve fund, or a reserve fund, if you will, and so if those costs don't realize, then we will not be spending those dollars. I would say that already, we're over our fuel budget this year, so, you know, more to come on that. We do negotiate on, I believe it's a state contract in bulk, so we try to get a lower price, but we don't get that determination until end of the year or beginning of the next year here, so we don't really know. So once again, instead of putting new levy dollars in, we thought we'd peg that to the reserve fund, just to have dollars in the budget if we need it, and if we don't need to use it, great, that'd be wonderful, but something that... to use it, great, that'd be wonderful, but something that we're probably going to have to deal with, and whether that's a permanent thing or not, you know, obviously the more permanent it is, we'll have to put that into our regular budgets and have levy support, not just rely on reserves.
Mr. Tregeon, before you go to the next slide.
Yeah.
I just wanted to note, and maybe you want to think about this in the future presentations, so the total of all the grant funding is about $814,000 that we're not using levy funding for, and the total of the use of reserves is about $586,000 in round numbers, so it might be nice to have those totalized.
Sure.
Somewhere.
Fair enough.
As you note, it's not a levy impact.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. That's a good point. All right. Wrap it up here. So my proposed budget, as I mentioned, will have a levy of $26.6 million, a levy percent increase of 7%, meaning that the median value at home would pay $86.16 or $7.18 per month, and that's just the city budget. With what we're talking about with the EDA budget, and you've seen it previously, and that EDA budget and levy would be lowered actually, or the levy would be lowered, the median value at home would actually pay $7.05 per month or $84.60, and that's what that chart shows here. So reduction in the EDA levy helps that bottom line for median value at home. So our next steps are to receive this information tonight, the 19th. The city council meeting, the finance commission will be bringing forward a recommendation. The finance commission does meet this Wednesday, and I'll present the budget to them, so they'll hear my presentation and ask me any questions, and they'll come forward the recommendation to you. On the 26th is the not to exceed preliminary city and EDA tax levy and budget. You're very familiar with that. That's where we can't exceed that. That's the maximum number. We'll have some discussions about utility rates and the fee schedule on November 7th, connect a final budget hearing on November 28th, and then on the 5th of December, our last meeting, officially scheduled meeting of the year, we'll adopt the final levy and budget and utility rates and fee schedule. So lots of information. As I said, there's a lot of information in the packet. Hopefully that you're able to give some additional details if you're curious, but I will stop my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you have or receive any feedback.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tregeon. Questions from the council for staff on the proposed city manager 2023 budget and tax levy? It is a lot to absorb. I have a feeling questions may trickle in following tonight, but we appreciate the thought and effort that went into this, both on your part, Mr. Tregeon, as well as Ms. Petrick, the finance director, but all of the staff who've been involved in the process throughout the last several months of putting this together, so appreciate that. I think I did see a hand up over here for a question.
Thank you. I had two notes I wrote. One was, I didn't see anything specifically about trees, and I thought we had put some money aside or that we were, you know, we talked about the ash replacement.
EAB. Yeah, I believe there is some additional coverage, remember?
Yes, that's in the CIP in the Park Improvement Fund.
Okay.
So that budget is showing up in here.
Okay. And the other thing was, I know I had heard at one point about a website update, and I don't see, are we not addressing that at this point?
That is actually in the 2022 budget.
Okay.
Fingers crossed we can work on that as well.
I know. I've happened by when there've been some discussions about it, but, okay.
And so just to clarify that, the EAB fund or spending, which is, I believe, coming from existing funds and not from new taxes, that is covered in the capital outlay portion of the overall budget as part of that $12.8 million or $12.7 million, isn't it? Thanks. Did you have other questions, Councilmember Strong?
No, thank you.
Okay. I couldn't remember how many you said you had. Thanks. Other questions, if any, from council members? All right. Doesn't appear to be the case. Thank you again, and we look forward to the next steps of the process, as you outlined, certainly not the least of which is to hear from our finance commission, and certainly not the least of which also is to hear from the public as we go through the rest of this process, now that there are some numbers to react to.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If I could just mention that the next newsletter coming out here in a matter of days has this information in there and requests feedback a couple ways, from a cutout in there to an email or QR code. We welcome any feedback and comments from the public on this.
All right. Thank you, again. All right. Next on our agenda is item 7C, which is to consider possible amendments to chapter 201 of the city code as it relates to youth commissioners, as well as to declare some vacancies for youth commissioners on various city commissions, and we have our assistant city manager Rebecca Olson with us this evening to bring this item to us. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm going to start by saying I am aware that of the time this evening, so I will do my best to be brief. Tonight, the agenda item that you are being asked to consider relates to the city's youth commissioners. As you know, the city code allows the council to appoint up to two residents age 18 or under to serve one-year terms on a commission as an ex officio youth commissioner for up to three consecutive terms. Currently, the city has two youth commissioners, one on the Human Rights Inclusion and Engagement Commission and one on the Parks Commission. Both of those youth commissioners have, will be completing their third consecutive term in August, and so they are no longer eligible for reappointment. So staff is requesting that council authorize vacancies on not just those commissions, but the other commissions that allow youth commissioners and approve a timeline as outlined in the RCA. I should note that in the RCA, it does say that youth commissioners are eligible to be appointed to the planning commission. That is a mistake on my part. I apologize. It is for the other commissions. They are not eligible for the planning commission. In addition, when reviewing the code, staff became aware that in 2019, the appointments for youth commissioners began following a term that coincided with the school year, which ended in August, August 31st, to be exact. However, the city code was never updated to reflect that change. The city code still has the term ending as July 31st, so there is an inconsistency between the terms that youth commissioners have been appointed to the last few years and what the code says. So staff is asking the council to provide clarification. Staff feels that the August 31st date is appropriate if council is of the mindset, the draft ordinance that is in the packet does reflect that change and has been published. The change would allow this recruitment period to coincide with the fall recruitment period of all our other commission members for vacancies, and that way staff is able to utilize the city newsletter as well as work with school districts once school is back in session to recruit youth. So I just wanted to show you a quick visual, because I'm a little bit of a visual person myself, about the recruitment periods. So our regular recruitment period for the terms, the adult commissioner terms that begin April 1st starts back in January, so vacancies are declared by council in January, and then recruitment happens between January and March, and the application period is open during that time. Interviews and appointments take place in March. We also have a fall process to fill any vacancies that have occurred since that time, and you just recently approved some vacancies on commissions, so that process starts in August. And then August and September, we recruit, application period is open, and then in September, interviews and appointments take place. The current youth commissioner recruitment, we have the vacancies declared in August. In August and September, we have the application period, and then we appoint in October. The reason the appointments occur in October is because that allows staff to utilize the full month of September, when school is back in session, to continue to recruit youth The other, one other update to that city code is removing that term ex officio. Now that we have allowed youth commissioners the option to be voting members with parental permission, may be appropriate to take that term out of the code. Finally, the other piece that came about as staff is looking at recruitment is, as we look to find additional avenues to bring that youth perspective to the decision-making process, staff wanted to start a discussion with council regarding the residency requirement for youth commissioners. As we know, one of the roles of the youth commissioner is to bring not only their perspective forward, but also to assist in representing their peers' perspectives. Given that school is a large part of how youth identify their community and peers, staff is bringing forward a suggestion to allow youth who attend a Roseville school to be considered for a commission appointment rather than requiring them to live within Roseville. There are many examples of youth who spend a great deal of time within Roseville city boundaries, attend school, participate in extracurricular activities such as sports, drama, music, or volunteer within the Roseville city boundaries, but because of their status as youth, don't have a choice in where their address is located. Looking at the Roseville area school boundaries, although Roseville accounts for a large portion of the cities that are represented, there are other cities. A large number of the cities that are included in the Roseville area school district boundaries do not allow youth commissioners. A few do, but a lot of them do not. So wanted to just put that out there as a potential on a way to increase the number of youth applicants. A lot of cities that do allow youth commissioners, similar to Roseville, do have a cap, and so there are limited opportunities for youth to serve as youth commissioners within the school district boundary. However, wanted to point out that regardless of where council decides to land on the issue of residency requirements, the city is going to continue to partner with the schools to help with recruitment efforts. So if council does choose to maintain that residency requirement, you could choose to adopt the ordinance in your packet without the language on number B that removes that residency requirement.
On the second line of the...
Second line and third line.
Oh, yeah.
And just maintaining the strikeout of ex officio. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions from the council in relation to these proposed changes? I imagine that there aren't questions or controversy about declaring vacancies necessarily, but certainly there are some proposed changes here that we may have. Questions about council questions? Councilmember Wilmes?
I was actually going to make a motion. That motion would be to, I lost my place here, to declare the vacancies on the commissions as noted in the packet, considering the ordinance as a separate standalone item.
It's been moved by Councilmember Wilmes, seconded by Councilmember Ratten, to declare the vacancies as outlined, noting the exception of the planning commission, which does not have the availability for youth commissioners. So we'll go ahead and consider that motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Wilmes, discussion?
Nope.
All right. Any discussion secondary, Councilmember Ratten?
I just appreciate yous being separated, a really different question.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to declare the vacancies? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. As to the other matters, we do also want to provide for public comment. I do note we've got somebody queuing up for that purpose, so, and certainly it was a patient for the rest of the meeting to transpire, so we appreciate that.
You got to see a lot of stuff.
So just welcome, and once again, just a brief recap, I won't go through the 20-minute presentation about public comment, but if you can just begin your comment with your name and street or address, if you're a city resident, otherwise you're city. If not, address council with the comments, and then we have a three-minute time limit. Welcome.
Of course. Thank you so much. Hi, everybody. My name is Elijah Robuck. I'm a resident of 1293 Draper Avenue West, so I am a resident of Roseville, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what you're talking about with the youth commissioners. I definitely think, for those of you who are unaware, I've served on the multicultural advisory committee for the City of Roseville Police Department, as well as I was really involved with the Roseville area school district, serving on their district curriculum advisory committee. I really personally think that youth voice is really important, and I think that the youth bring a whole other perspective that I think a lot of times we don't always see, even people younger than me as well. And I really think that it's important that we can have more youth commissioners on these commissions, if possible, through recruitment or whatever needs necessary. And to add also onto the point that was brought up about the non-residents possibly doing it, you know, I actually think that might be a good idea. I, for example, live almost just barely in Roseville. I live by Roselon and Hamlin, if you know where that is, so right by the Falcon Heights border. And I know a lot of people who happen to live in Falcon Heights or Little Canada who spend, they work in Roseville, they spend most of their time in Roseville, but because of moving situations, and a lot of times these people did actually live in Roseville and then moved out, right, they're no longer eligible for the commission. And I think that, you know, although these youth may not necessarily, you know, live by street address, I think it's really important that they still might have a say, but of course, I completely understand if that's not something that works. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys doing this. I know this was a long meeting, so.
This one's not, then. We've had one. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Do you have two people on line that wish to?
All right. Comment? So I'll first bring in Holly Swiglow.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Awesome. Hi, my name is Holly Swiglow. My address is 1523 Arona Street, St. Paul, Minnesota, and I'm going to be a senior at Roseville Area High School this coming school year. I am speaking on behalf of, us students would really like to see all Roseville area high school students be eligible to participate on these commissions. I can say that I do not live in Roseville, but I'm definitely interested in participating on a commission, as are many of my friends I've talked to about this. I think there's just a lot of student interest, and we feel that's really important to have our voices heard on these commissions. And I also think it's a really great opportunity for students to learn about how government works, how public policy works. I think a lot of students are interested in that, and it's a really great opportunity for them to see how that works. Maybe if they're considering that as a possible career, just to have that experience would be really great. I'd also like to share that I've lived in St. Paul for most of my life, but that wasn't my choice. This is just where I, you know, where I was born, where I've grown up. But I live about six houses away from living in Roseville, so I'm on the border pretty close, and I really feel like Roseville is my home more than St. Paul. I've always gone to Roseville area schools. I do dance in Roseville. I work in Roseville. I, you know, I really just sleep in St. Paul. I spend most of my time inside of Roseville. So I really feel like it's my community, and I feel like it would be a privilege and an honor to be able to participate on these commissions. I also feel like it's a really great opportunity to represent my peers as well. I help run two different clubs at my school, and I feel like I, you know, generally have a good vibe for how students are feeling about certain initiatives in our city and our state, so I feel like I would be a great person to represent my peers, even though I don't live in Roseville and would really appreciate that opportunity. Yeah, thank you so much for listening, and thanks much for all you do as well. I know this is going to be a very long meeting, so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
We should bring these guys in more inspirational.
Okay, and then we have Amelia Guzdal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
I live at 3200 West Wausau Boulevard in Shoreview, just two doors down from living in Roseville. I'm a senior at Roseville Area High School. I don't have much to add to what Elijah and Holly said, because they both had great points, but I know many people who would be interested in being on a commission and who would be great candidates. I want to emphasize that it's so crucial to have student voices on a Roseville city commission, because we will see all of us who go to Ros and other Roseville area schools are affected by the decisions of the city, and even those of us who don't live in Roseville, we are still affected because we go to school in Roseville and are part of the community and we spend most of our time in Roseville. I myself participate in sports year-round, music, and various clubs in Roseville, and because we are students, we have a perspective that no one else on the city board has. So for these and many other reasons, it's incredibly important to have multiple Ros students on one of the Roseville city commissions, whether or not they reside there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this issue this evening? No peer pressure back there. All right. Thank you again for everyone who has made comments this evening and participated in the meeting, and hopefully we were somewhat entertaining for the rest of the meeting. Thoughts from the council in terms of going forward and some of the changes that have been proposed? Councilmember Strong?
I would just like to add a few additional comments. I know that in addition to maybe not having say where you live, as indicated, some of the students maybe lived here when they were younger. Talked with a few young people who, one of whom lives part-time in Badness Heights their schooling here, but they already have a lot of different opportunities to, they're not really connected into one community anyway. A couple of the students I've spoken with are, live in Minneapolis or St. Paul, those entities are just too large for them to feel like they could get downtown and be part of the activity. A lot of students were part of the student walkout, feel connected and compelled to come here and ask for what they need as citizens. And then other cities like Lauderdale, they don't have the opportunity to be participating, and I really hate to turn down the opportunity for people. They're better teachers than we are on what is otherwise we do need, we aren't going to live forever, so we are going to need people who take our spots and who care enough about the community to move forward and be part of the civic process. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the youth commissioners as, allow them to be students and not specifically residents within the City of Roseville.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Graff. There's been a motion by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Graff, and this isn't necessarily to adopt the ordinance at this point, but rather to include non-residents as youth commissioners, as I understand it. We can certainly subsequently talk about the ordinance itself.
That are going to school in Roseville.
Right, right, as outlined. Discussion on the motion, maker of the motion, Councilmember Strong.
Nothing further.
I was going to say you made quite an argument right before your motion. Councilmember Graff is the seconder of the motion.
Well, I think it's important to, you know, they do have a connection to Roseville, and I think it also includes the homeschool program, so I think there's, it's just a broader spectrum of people. And people who do go to the schools, they tend to feel a connection to the community they're going to school in, so they'd like to participate in that, and I think it would be good for the city to have a broader range of voices. I would support it.
Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Willness?
Well, we are a representative form of government, and we represent folks that reside in the City of Roseville. And that's really the core of what we do, what our democracy is. We have various geographic boundaries that exist and are established. With respect to being able to be involved in groups and civic opportunities and things, there certainly are many, many opportunities directly within Roseville Schools or Moundsview Schools, or even some of the private schools that are located in the area. And so, residency requirement is something, from my perspective, that I think is important. And so, I would not support the change to allow folks residing outside the City of Roseville to serve on our commissions in any capacity.
Other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Eton?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to make sure I am consistent in this, and Member Willness just brought it up, that we need to make sure when we talk about schools, we include the Moundsview Schools. About 20%, 25% of our land area and a lot of residents, an increasing number of residents, attend the Moundsview Schools, so it's important that we are talking about that in any language we put out. But I, first of all, I know a little bit of Elijah helps when you have a young person in school, these folks, and Holly has certainly shown herself to be a great leader. I don't know Amelia, but I'm sure if she's hanging out with these guys, she's great too. So, I appreciate their perspective. I think that is really important. But I do think we need to have, where is that boundary, and how does that work out? And so, I would tend to agree with Member Willness, that I would look for that residency piece. I guess, I don't know how it would ever work out. The only other way, if we did not have residents who stepped forward, that you'd have like an ex officio, non-resident member, something like that, but that would make a very complicated application process, so I'm not sure how that would work out. I absolutely understand the point, and I agree with having youth commissioners as part of this. So, at the same time, I think they might be able to lead us to others who do live in Roseville, who could be great leaders, so that's where I fall on this.
All right. Councilmember Strong?
I'd just like to add, if we had a full complement, I think that that wouldn't be unreasonable, but we've had two for the last year, and we've had a couple come forward and haven't been able to complete their commitment to it. And so, I just think, and I think the reason for exclusion of Moundsview, not to Councilmember Eton personally, but that the Roseville Area School, the schools that reside, that are within the school, are within the boundaries of Roseville itself, maybe that's a specific where it's if you attend school in Roseville, not in Little Canada, but wherever, but if you attend school in Roseville, you have a commitment, and you're in this, you're in this space. So, I'd like to, you know, bring that forward as a possibility, that it's specifically people who have an interest in the pursuit of something better for the people and the constituents of Roseville.
Councilmember Eton?
My contrast to that is the parents of these young people who are living in Roseville are the ones who are paying our taxes and are residents of Roseville. And if this was a school district committee, of course, but we're talking about, we're serving the residents of Roseville. These people are advising us on, say, park and rec, not on school issues. We don't control the schools, so if they're advising us on Roseville park and rec, for example, my son works every week through the summer at, on Grove Park, which is in the Moundsview Schools.
Mm-hmm. School district.
So, school district boundaries, right. So, you know, so we are operating here in the City of Roseville. I think the residents of Roseville and the young people should be the ones who are appointed to commissions to help with decisions about things that affect their city.
And I would just note, since I haven't had a chance to speak yet on it, that just adding to the back and forth we just had, you know, certainly one concern about if we limited it to schools that are physically located in Roseville is that we would actually exclude a number of Moundsview students who are residents of Roseville, so that wouldn't be workable. So, we'd have to have an "and".
I was thinking of an "and", not an "or".
Yeah, okay. And I think that ultimately we have to draw lines, and I think, you know, certainly you could say, well, within six blocks of the border, and maybe you'd get some more folks, especially folks who are on the meeting tonight. But ultimately, I tend to agree that just because of the nature of our business and how we structure everything else, that I think we have to kind of look at that residency requirement. And just to speak to sort of the topic of the participation levels, you know, we don't have a small number of students who are residents of Roseville, both in the Moundsview and in Roseville School District, not to mention private and parochial schools and homeschools. I think that the recruitment process is the second piece of this that we need to, you know, really address, and I think that that can get to the participation amount, and I have more to say about that, which I will hold for now, but as to the specific motion related to the resident versus non-resident, I think at this point, you know, while completely understanding the nature of the suggestion and the argument, and certainly the benefit that we could see, I think we do have to draw that line, and so I'm not supportive of the motion. Any other discussion on the motion at this time? Hearing none, we have the motion before us to include non-residents as outlined in the proposed ordinance, in the, as youth commissioners. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion fails with Councilmembers Eton and Willness and myself in opposition. And I do want to just get to the recruitment and the timing of the whole thing, because that I think is a critical part of it, too. I'm a little bit concerned about a process that goes August through October and makes an appointment that essentially goes through August of the next year, because that appointment isn't even a full-year appointment at that point. And I don't know that that's fair to the young people. And I think we may be in a situation where we may need more time to do recruiting over the course of the school year. So, I kind of do like the notion of sort of somewhere in the summertime having the start and end of terms, and maybe that's July 31st, maybe it's August 31st, or whatever it might be. But I also like the notion of having more time to do the recruitment effort through the school year and do that appointment than, you know, like at the end of the school year for the term that starts and goes through the following school year. I think that that's a way to, A, give people full terms, which I think is important, and B, give ourselves the time to do the recruitment and make sure that we're connecting with young people and everybody knows what the process is, and, once again, to get those full terms. So, that's sort of where I'm at, thinking about that, and I would be curious to hear what other council members think. And I think Councilmember Willness has a hand up.
Yeah, certainly, interesting to take a second look at that. I know that originally this July 31st term expiration was usually kind of geared for and focused on those graduating seniors in high school. Typically, you know, many would be going off to post-high school programs, college, and so by the end of August, many are already, have left and have gone to school. And so, that's something we may want to take a look at, too. But yes, I think the, figuring out a way to adjust the terms to a full year, if you will, I think is certainly something to take a second look at.
Other thoughts from council members about terms and recruitment timing and things like that? Councilmember Strong?
I just think having been in education, spring isn't typically the time when people are thinking to fall, and that's not typically a time when people are signing up for things other than soccer and summer vacation, so it hasn't been, I think, more, fall is more when people are thinking to sign up for something and to be part of something that they're planning for the year. I don't know, a lot of high schoolers and parents alike aren't too forward-thinking to think about what's going to start four months in advance.
Other than college, and all that planning.
Right.
Other councilman thoughts? Councilmember Eton?
Thank you. Yeah, I would not be in favor of moving this to August 31st, for the reason that if it is a senior, one of these fine people has spoken tonight, by that time, almost everyone is going to be at college or have finished their buying at the local Target and packing up the car, kind of like they're moving on in their world. So, I was, I'm pretty comfortable with the July date, I might even be comfortable with the June 30th date, but I would not want to go later. And I am concerned about if we recruit in September and appoint in October, and they start in November, so then they're going to have about a 10-month term if we went to August 31st. If they've left already, they have a nine-month term, right? So, at that point, they are going to spend several months getting into it, so they're going to have a few months of impact. So, I think this timeframe really limits the impact of a youth commissioner. I would be okay with a separate thing that happened in April or May. I would be okay with lining it up with our February, March recruitment. And as students are doing this, in contrast to what was said, students register for classes in February, late January, first week of February, second week, in our local high schools.
For the following?
For the following year.
Oh, okay.
So, that is when they're doing that. Many of their peers are applying for college or have applied for college at that time for the following year. Things like that are part of that process, but I would go either way, whether it's part of our recruiting in that mid-winter timeframe, or whether we had a separate youth-specific recruitment in April or May, because certainly that is, that could be legitimate, too, to see who's ready at that point to think about the future. But that's my thought. They are used to signing up for their future in February.
And I should note, too, I don't think there's anything saying that we wouldn't still necessarily, because we have people terming off and wouldn't have any youth commissioners, that we wouldn't maybe, as a sort of a stopgap, we do an interim process that goes this fall, just to get people on the commission, at least for a partial term. Technically, obviously, there's age limitations that come into play, but technically, they would be eligible for three more full terms under our official code, so, you know, they may not be able to do all that within their lifetimes of being under 18 or whatever the limitation, of great, but, you know, I think that's a possibility, and certainly I wouldn't want to go months and months and months without any youth commissioners. I don't think that's the intent of what I was trying to get. I was trying to think about, thinking forward, looking forward, how, what's the best timing during the year, and how do we best make sure that we're giving the students a full term, a fair term to them, especially those who may come on as a senior. Obviously, you know, somebody who's in ninth grade has the opportunity to have subsequent full terms theoretically, you know, October to October, it almost works out to be, but I think we need to spend some time thinking about that before we make a change. You know, I'd like to know what we can do better on the recruitment process and timing of that going forward, but certainly we could still do the October.
It's almost like we should ask some teenagers.
Certainly.
Because I just wanted to add, I mean, April is just one big AP exam, so I was thinking that wouldn't be a great time.
I was thinking maybe earlier.
APs are in May, but...
Well, and...
There's some prep going on, I imagine, between...
Yeah, and so, maybe to have, but, you know, then you have band concerts, or tours and choir tours and everything else, too, so making sure, it's just a busy time, especially if you're a senior.
I was just, I'm not sure there aren't busy times for families and students.
Right.
I've been gathering that.
I think they're more, they're more ambitious in the fall when it all looks new.
Understood. And we can start recruiting in the fall, certainly for the following year, too. Ms. Olson, you had been eager to jump in with some comments earlier, and so I want to make sure I don't forsake that opportunity.
I did. We have not done an engagement process on this with youth. However, we have anecdotal evidence from youth commissioners, past youth commissioners, that coinciding it with a school year, the nine-month, it has been positive for them. Starting or asking them to commit prior to knowing the workload of when classes begin has been an issue. We've had a youth commissioner that has said that they realize that their workload has been too heavy just before they even were to attend their first commission meeting, and so they had to drop out. And so, I think coinciding it with a grade level, a school year, might be a question to ask the youth if you wanted us to go back and do that. In the meantime, just need some direction on how you'd like to recruit for this upcoming process of what sort of term you would like for that one while we do this.
Well, I think, right now, we're saying we'll make an appointment in October with what's outlined, and the term would go through the code term, which right now is July 31st. We could obviously make it August 31st if we prefer, or something else. But I think we could do a process that gets us through that and then still have the opportunity. I like the idea of engaging young people in what they think is the best process, and certainly involving parents in that as well. And so, you know, I think that if we do the interim process, and perhaps even under the existing code, you know, with the July 31st, until we figure it all out, and then we can make code changes at that point and other changes to our process as appropriate. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And we already proved that?
Essentially, we did, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Eton?
I think I would make a motion to change the text in 201.03 under membership on the second to last line to say, serve one-year terms on a commission as youth, and remove the words "ex officio", so we straighten that out.
All right. So, the, essentially, the only change-
Is the "ex officio" word.
Would be the "ex officio" coming out. The rest of the existing code language would remain.
Remain. Yes, that's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second to that.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Graff. Discussion on the motion, maker of the motion, Councilmember Eton?
It's just, we are already doing this, so let's make it correct.
All right. Further discussion?
Cleans up language, I think it's important.
All right. There's no further discussion, fairly straightforward thing. All those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance change, only changing our current ordinance to remove the "ex officio" language-
Correct.
-signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, that change is made. Just one more observation on this topic before we move on in our agenda. I know we're anxious to get wrapped up here. I did just want to note that I appreciated that all of our youth speakers this evening spoke in less than a minute and a half, generally.
Way better than adults.
And said quite a bit, and set a good example for adult public speakers going forward. And my only other note is that I'm no longer going to require addresses from youth speakers, because I don't think that's appropriate, that they publicly state their address for a variety of reasons, not to mention their own safety. So, with that, thank you again, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Olson, and we'll move on then with our agenda to consideration of city council minutes. We have council minutes from our July 5th, excuse me, July 25th, August 8th, and August 12th council meetings. 25th, August 8th, and August 12th council meetings. Do we have any changes beyond what's been outlined in the minute drafts that have been provided to us with changes that came from before? Or a motion to approve one or more at this time?
Do people want to split these up?
I think
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was positing in my brain. Thank you, Mr. Graff.
So, I believe August 8th would be the one and perhaps the 12th.
I move the approval of August 8th minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Strong. And Councilmember Atten, were you at the meeting of the 12th? I can't remember. I'm sorry.
Well, we're talking about the July 25th right now.
We're talking about the 8th.
Did you move the 8th?
I think you moved the 8th, right?
Oh, I did move the 8th. Is that clear?
Is that what you wanted to move?
Well, it's on the floor, so.
We can fix, no, we can fix the motion. If you want that to be a motion on the July 25th.
I'll do the July 25th.
All right. That's what I am officially notating here. Councilmember Graff, and moved, Councilmember Strong, seconded approval of the minutes of July 25th, 2022. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, we have the August 8th and August 12th.
Remain.
We had, let's see, did we have different attendance at each of those?
No.
Was it just Councilmember Atten that was gone from the polls? Okay, Councilmember Willis.
I'd move the meeting minutes of August 8th.
Second.
All right, we're going to do it that way. Councilmember Willis moves, Councilmember Graff seconds approval of the minutes of August 8th, 2022. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstentions.
All right, we have approves four to zero with Councilmember Atten abstention. Councilmember Willis?
Move the meeting minutes of August 12th.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Strong to approve the meeting minutes of our lengthy meeting of August 12th. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstention. Councilmember Atten, that passes four to zero with Councilmember Atten abstention. That concludes our meeting minutes. That brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Trudgeon, would you give us a brief rundown on the consent items this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,774,030.30 and 79 cents. Agenda item 10B approves two things. One is a temporary gambling permit for Rose Town American Auxiliary for a raffle to be held on September 18th and a temporary liquor license for Bent Brewstillery for an event on September 10th. Item 10C authorizes the purchase of utility cart, of an utility cart and greens mower for the Cedar Home Golf Course. Item 10D approves final payment for the Lexington Water Main Improvements. Item 10E approves the creation of three limited-term IT employees. We are looking to fill these positions in the short term before they become separate independent employees, IT employees of Metro Inet. Through the end of the year, Metro Inet will pay 100% of the cost of these employees to fill those vacancies. That's the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent items this evening?
So moved. Second.
All right, moved by Councilwoman Willis, seconded by Councilmember Strong. Any discussion on the consent items?
Nope.
No.
All right, I would just ask staff, are they confident that Lexington Water Main improvements are going to hold this time?
We sure hope so. I had quite the disruption last time.
This does start the warranty, as I understand it.
It does.
All right. A discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Mr. Trudgeon, future agenda review?
Just real briefly, our next meeting is September 12th. We have three bigger items on the agenda, equity update, consider alcohol compliance violations. There are seven of them, so it's going to be quite lengthy to go through. And then receive an update on the civic campus master plan. Reminder, the following evening, we have commission applicant interviews. This is a special city council meeting. On the 19th, we will have a brief EDA meeting, just to have the EDA, the council acting as the EDA, recommend approval of the budget and levy for 2023 and not to accede to the council. And then finally, on the 19th, right after that, we'll have the finance commission's 23 budget recommendations as well as potentially appoint commissioners to P WET and planning.
Question? All right, Mr. Trudgeon, thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Where are the commission interviews going to be?
We are still planning on holding them at Cedar Home.
Okay. And what are we going to do in terms of sound and camera and things like that to make it so it does not appear as they're
Yes.
Being deposed?
Yep. We are working on having better equipment. Let Ms. Olson speak to that.
Thank you. I can't give you the technical update because I'm not very well-versed in the technical aspect, but we have additional microphones available and a different type of camera with a microphone that will be used. So, it'll be a much better setup. The last one was, we did not have the equipment at the time, but we now currently have the equipment.
And I was just thinking back to council meetings that have been held at Cedar Home. We did have, at that time, Nine North doing the meetings. And so, they had all their equipment and that sound was fine. So, if we need to go that route, we could go that route in the future. Anyway, thank you, Ms. Olson. Other councilmember initiated items for the future, communications reports, announcements from councilmembers this evening. None? None? There is only one item left on our agenda this evening, which is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Graff. To adjourn, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We adjourned at 9:15. Thank you, everyone.